Here.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Waters.
Here.
I move we go into closed session, City Council to discuss strategies for council about matters where litigation is imminent because public disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disavantage the position of the city in that litigation.
Second.
Breckin.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Kepren.
Aye.
Here.
Here.
Moore.
Scott.
Here.
Waters.
Here.
Kepren.
Here.
Here.
Five minutes.
Five minutes.
Go ahead, you have five.
No, three, three fifty-seven left.
We better hurry then.
Breckin.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Waters.
Here. Listen, stand for a moment, silent prayer called by the Pledge of Allegiance, as you stand today, remember the McCormick family and the loss of their son this week, if you would. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. The flag of the United States of America, and the Republic of Washington stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll all back up. Okay. Get it. Amy Starman.
And we'll all back up.
We have a proclamation that reads, whereas between four to seven children die every day in America from abuse and neglect, and whereas thirty-five-hundred-and-eighty-one children in the state of Iowa were served by child advocacy centers as victims of sexual and physical abuse or neglect last year, whereas child abuse can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that can have lifelong consequences for victims of abuse, and whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the meaningful connections and partnerships created between child welfare, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, and law enforcement agencies, and whereas each April Mercy Child Advocacy Center and other supporters of the child advocacy movement ask the community to join the outreach to reduce or prevent child abuse, now therefore, I Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, Iowa, on behalf of City Council, do hereby proclaim April 2018 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Siouxland, and urge all our citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families. I'd like to present that to you and say it in your words, if you would.
Thank you. I just want to thank all of you for recognizing April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Each day, we do see children and families who have suffered the consequences of abuse. We see firsthand the struggles that they live through. We provide services to address the abuse after it takes place, and last year alone, we saw over nine hundred children at the Mercy Child Advocacy Center. We know that the statistics are sobering, but we do know that abuse is preventable. And so that's the main thing, we really just ask all of you, because our dream is that we will no longer have to see those children. So we ask all of you to participate, particularly this Friday is, wear blue, so we hope to blue out our community and hope to see all of you in blue as well. Thank you very much. Thank you.
You've got the Mayor's Youth Commission, come on up here, if you would, all of you. We've got new shirts on, I see, Dan.
We have new shirts.
Yeah, new shirts. Wow. Pretty fancy, huh? You guys want to stand back here so they can get pictures of you? How's that sound? Whereas the Sioux City Mayor's Youth Commission is comprised of ninth-to-twelfth grade students from Sioux City High Schools that are making a positive impact in our community, and these students are the future leaders of our community, and whereas members have actively participated in various community service activities and made significant contributions to the Sioux City Parks and Rec Department, most recently, the Mayor's Youth Commission raised over ten thousand dollars for DIS golf projects in Sioux City in two thousand to assist with adding a chiller to the Cone Park Ice Skating Ring, and whereas the Mayor's Youth Commission was nominated and awarded the Iowa Parks and Rec, the City Council is proud of their drive and initiative to make a lasting impact on our city, now therefore, I Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, Iowa, on behalf of City Council, to hereby commend the Mayor's Youth Commission for exemplary service to the Sioux City community and for receiving the Service Club Award for the Iowa Parks and Recreation Association. On the phone list, and that has a plaque you would like to present to you, thank you. On behalf of the Iowa Parks and Recreation Association, I'd like to present you with the Service Club Award. Do you want to hear it? Now, we have a presentation for the Metro Hockey Team, and Mr. Moore would like you all to come up and stand up here so you can get your picture taken as well. Yeah, come on up, guys. Come on up behind us. Come on up here. Nice work, man. Yes, go over there, son. What's up, buddy? Congrats, brother. Ready? Yeah. All right. Right there. We've got plenty of room for it. So we have a commendation that reads, whereas the Sioux City Metros recently completed the best season in the history of the organization, which had its inaugural season in nineteen-seventy-one-seventy-two. The Metros claimed the league championship with an overall record of twenty-five wins and two losses and one overtime loss. In the Midwest High School Hockey League, the team had the top two-point earners and two additional players ranking in the top twenty-five, and whereas the Sioux City Metros went on to win the Midwest High School Hockey League Championship, winning both the league and tournament championship was a feat last accomplished during the nineteen-ninety-three-ninety-four season, and whereas the two thousand seventeen-two thousand eighteen Sioux City Metros went on to compete in the USA Hockey National Tournament, winning the championship game three to two, and completing their season with thirty-three wins, three losses, and one overtime loss. This is the first time the Metros have won a national championship. Now therefore, I Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby commend the Sioux City Metros and their coaches, managers, and staff for a record two thousand-two thousand eighteen season. Go Metros. Thank you.
I would just like to thank Dr. Paul Gosman of Sioux City Superintendent for attending, supporting Sioux City Metros, Dr. Raspison, Dakota Valley Superintendent, and Harlan Hanson, who's the mayor of Marcus, Iowa, is here today for supporting Sioux City Metros. Thank you.
I just want to thank the council for this award. It's well-earned by these kids. The tournament we were in, we have a total of twenty-nine in our high school division, and playing with these teams that were from other places, they draw by more numbers. So this was quite an accomplishment these gentlemen did, and I hope they remember it the rest of their life, I already told you that. We draw from all our high schools, and we have one from Marcus, and where else? Dakota Valley, right? And Hinton. So we just appreciate everything, and thank you. Thank you. Good job, guys. Yes. Congratulations, guys. Thanks, you guys. Very nice. Congratulations. Wow. Yeah, you know what? Yes, he was back in Florida, but he told me. Yeah, he told me. Is he in uniform? No. Oh, there he is, he's sitting right there. Oh, there he is. I said, oh, he's sitting right over there. That's interesting. Yeah.
There were all our people.
Well, now it's not near as exciting as I thought it was going to be.
I know it. I thought for sure it was, you know.
I know for Mr. Moore, a third-place finish is a big deal, because I've seen him relish the trophy. Certainly winning it all, I've been there before, I know what it means, so you can appreciate it, tell you the best. I'm sticking with you. He won't even take a third-place trophy home. Who plays for third place for throwing it out loud?
Yeah, I get it.
All right, we have a presentation now by Sergeant Jason Allen on Leadership Siouxland.
Will you guys be able to hear me from over here, I hope?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, as the mayor introduces, my name's Jason Allen, I am a police officer, a police sergeant, been on the department for eighteen years, but I'm not here in that necessary capacity today. This is Paula Bennett, she's a medical doctor, and Aaron Butler, who's of the United Way here from Sioux City. Paula and I represent Leadership Siouxland, we're a committee that is born out of that process, and Aaron is someone we've recently partnered with through the Chamber of Commerce Community Enhancement Division to try to bring forth a project. I'll preface it with saying the project we'd like to bring forth is a wall mural in Sioux City. What we are going to ask of you is strictly permission to paint the mural, not logistics, not funding, not anything but permission. So I'd like to show you exactly what we're talking about.
Good to me, go ahead.
Put all you want to.
Yeah. Two or three walls.
Where we would like to paint the mural is at the intersection of Third and Wesley, there, at the base of Prospect Hill, there's the wall that faces east, it's at the T-intersection. Break it down a little farther, that'd be as you're coming up from Third Street westbound, you'd run right into that wall. The reason we want to do this is because, as you guys know, Wesley Way was redesigned a few years ago, it's one of the major motor vehicle arteries in Sioux City, but when you come over the bridge, there's nothing that says, "Welcome to Sioux City." You have the little green sign on the Vets Bridge that defines the boundary, and then you have the white sign overhead that says, "Welcome to Iowa, a place to grow," but short of the iconic hard rock guitar, there's nothing else as you come into that major artery that says, "Welcome here." Initially, when we had this project, we thought, hey, let's make this grand, you know, flowing rock face waterfall, and we realized that's going to cost, you know, six figures probably to make something like that happen, so we started to look for other options. The reason we wanted to do this, this is what some of the cities do, there's a lot of big cities that do this, they paint, it's kind of based out of graffiti art, if you will, but they try to use it to tie into local attributes of the community, so like you can see here, they have the oil fields, the space station, things like that, and I realize we have a lot of things here in Sioux City that we could tie into this mural through local flair, local art, history, whatever it may be. So just to show you a few more examples, there's Cleveland, they have the Browns helmet, they have the rail trains in the background. Here's one out of Watanga, which is more like a historic map, so these can really take a lot of shapes and faces. San Diego, again, they got their theme park there and their major waterways. Chicago, obviously, you got the Cubs and things like that. We want to do some version of this. Basically, what we want to do is, our initial rendition was, we were hoping to reach out to local students, I realize there's some other issues there, whether they're eighteen and liability, what have you, that could be collegiate-level kids or what have you. We've also talked to a few nonprofit groups who have said they would love to let their people do the painting, so basically, we were wanting to offer oversight, get all the logistics side of it handled, and make sure that this is a classy, tasteful piece of art on the wall, whether it had to be a final approval through you guys or what have you down the road. Some of that stuff we haven't ironed out, we're hoping to do, and like I said, we're just looking for permission to proceed at this point, and if we can line everything up, possibly get a beautiful mural on that wall that anybody who ends up at the red light will enjoy.
Do you have a timeline, Jason, for when you would hope to have a sign up?
Yeah, so I think if this goes through today, or whenever you guys could review, we could probably have this done in a matter of months. What we'd really like to do, though, is continue this going, we'd like to paint it this year, and like I said, let's just play a hypothetical quick, say, students from Briar Cliff offer to paint it this year. We're hoping maybe next year, there's like a playful competitiveness that in the spring, you know, another school or another group says, hey, we'll do it, they paint over it, and we give them the same block letters as the outline and say, what can you do with it? So the thought was just to kind of keep it spirited and fun, and obviously, we put the...
I like that, starting with Briar Cliff, I think that's a good idea.
What's that? So that's the plan, though, is just so you know, to update it over time, but not crazy quick, you know, update it maybe once a year, something like that, and...
Well, and the other thing I would encourage you, I love the idea, I'm a believer in downtown murals, I think that really ties a community together, I think that a lot of cities across the country are doing this right now, I'm excited to see our future doing this as well. I would also ask you to think not just about redoing the mural in that location, but looking at secondary locations, I mean, I have really a quality piece right there on that wall, and then I could list you six properties right now that I think would be really prime for a mural spot.
Yeah, and we...
So look ahead and where those might be.
And we had jokingly discussed that, we said, if this one looks as great as we hope, well, what are we going to do when you come in off of the twenty bypass? So I don't think Perkins wants us to paint their building.
And I think it's a marketing tool, I mean, fans here, yeah, we've talked about that a lot with social media presence and people taking pictures at the murals, especially with these, you don't have to go far to see all of that, so.
Yeah.
I think it's as much a marketing piece of our community as something that you guys are trying to leave your mark on, and I, as a graduate of Leadership Siouxland, I appreciate that very much.
Yeah, and like I said, just to give credit, Aaron's here with the Community Enhancement Division of the Chamber of Commerce, Chamber of Commerce, excuse me, we've partnered with them to hopefully help make this more successful than on our own, so.
So Jason, are you going to, do you have to do fundraisers for this, you know, to do the mural, because you're going to need money to...
Well, we've been in discussion with some suppliers of the paint and things like that, just to try to sort some of that out. Part of the reason we were leaning towards students on the front end is they're much cheaper than trying to commission an artist.
That's right.
But that's some of the stuff we have to iron out as we go forward, so.
I love the idea.
But like I said, if we didn't have permission, there's no point in rattling cages at that point, so.
And especially something like this, it's bright, and it's going to catch your eye, whether you want it to or not, you know, when you're at this stuff, so you can't miss it, so, and, you know, to Alex, also, there's plenty of places around town that we could do different iconic things, so it just makes us, you know, differ from other cities, and that's what it's all about, you know, we want people to know who we are, where we're at, so, thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Great, great presentation, I'm in favor of it too. Make sure you talk to Jeff Hanson, make sure we coordinate anything with the sign regulations we have, so we can alter those, whatever we have to do to address it, just so we don't get tripped up over that. No, we won't, we can violate our own sign ordinance, as we do it every day, so we'll be good to go.
Yeah.
Right, Jeff?
One thing I want to add, though, when you get closer to what you want to do, bring it back so we can see what you're going to do.
Absolutely.
So that way...
Fantastic.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, too, and the only thing I would ask, or am curious about, is who's going to give the final approval on it? Will your group still be together after your class graduates?
I was actually going to give you my personal guarantee that if this thing fizzles out in a couple of years, I'll personally go out there and paint that wall back to gray.
Good enough for me.
But, yeah, we do plan on sticking around, as you know, we all live and work in this community, so it's not like we're fly-by-night here and gone, so.
Great.
Awesome.
Thank you very much.
Get it done, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our sports team's on those. I want to throw that out today, we'll just let their juices flow first. I move the consent agenda, which is items two through seven, eight, today, you can consider them to be passed unanimously, if you want to speak on an item, please come forward as I read that item, or under citizen concerns, be sure and state your name and address, Knife River Midwest for hot mixed asphalt extending the purchase order for one year. This was the second year only, right? Or is this like, we roll it every year deal?
This was actually originally done in March of sixteen, so this would be the...
Did when?
March of sixteen.
Fifteen?
Sixteen, two thousand sixteen, so it's going to be the first year.
This will be the third year, then?
It was done in March of sixteen for one year, so it was extended in seventeen, so it'd be the second extension this year, so the third year.
This will be the third extension, yes.
And I had that question as well, so I was just going to ask, so when do we go back to bid, or put it out to bid with that?
Uh, we had...
This is the last time they'll kind of re-up.
This will be the last, yeah, when we initially bid it out, we had put, said price may be maybe extended for two additional one-year periods, so this will be the last year that it can be extended, so next year, we would bid it out again.
Four is a resolution accepting plans and specifications for the Garrettson Avenue realignment project. Five are actions relating to agreements and contracts, A is a resolution approving work orders number four, five, and six, and change orders one, two, and three to the agreement of Bartland West for the SCWWTF recovery, resource recovery and beneficial refuse project.
Hey, one thing on that, that I just wanted to mention, Mark, if you could just with work order five specifically, I know that it was focused on improving the communication or focusing on the communication, I'm sure we'll work with members of their team, because they'll be better well-versed with the language and things like that, but can we also coordinate that with Ann and our communications team here, so we're working on our channels of social media, et cetera, to bring awareness and education?
Mark Sims, Utilities Director, yes, that's already underway.
Okay. Yeah, I figured, I just wanted to make sure, specifically with five, I know it was kind of interesting, that communication component, so I just wanted to make sure Ann was...
Right, they'll provide some of the technical content, and Ann will take care of most of the rest.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
B is a resolution approving renewal option one with Bounty Medical for small medical supplies for the Fire Department Emergency Medical Services Division. We just keep getting these annual renewals, I know it's a road of least resistance, but I've never seen a city that does this as much as we do, I must be the only one that has a concern, we never, ever used to do this. Same way with that asphalt, we never used to do three-year deals. How do you know what the price of asphalt is?
Well, you know, we depend on the department, as far as the prices, they feel comfortable with the price, and as far as bidding it out, we left up with the department, Field Services, if they wanted to bid it out again, and they felt comfortable with the price, so...
Well, no, they don't want to bid it out, they're happy right where they're at, but that doesn't mean it's the right thing to do.
Because the price doesn't impact them, it impacts us budgeting.
I just don't know how you know what the price of this stuff is if you don't bid it. What's so difficult about bidding this little thing?
Jim Hayden, EMS Director, basically, a lot of these medications, the price fluctuates so much that it's important to get regular bids, not just an annual bid to purchase from Bounty. This allows us to just go ahead and order some of these medications when we find them. However, I have found that there are some of these medications that we're able to get cheaper, actually in town, from one of the pharmacies, so I've been trying to keep track of what the prices are at the different places, and if we can get it from Bounty and their price is right, order from them per this contract, the way, and maybe I'm doing it right, maybe I'm doing it wrong, but, and also shop around and try and get the best price for some, because some of the drugs are, it fluctuates so much, one dose of glucagon, I found that a pharmacy in town was a hundred and eighty-seven dollars and ten cents, one of the online sources was six hundred dollars for that same dose, so it's, there's such a fluctuation, it's worth investigating it every time we order, in my opinion.
You're an innovator, then, Jim.
I don't know.
Why do you need this contract?
I'm just trying to spend it like it's my money, I guess.
So then why do you need the contract, then?
Basically, with Bounty, that's not just, they're giving us one heck of a good discount, so this allows us to actually go ahead and purchase based on those discounts we're getting from them on those, it's just, you know, like I said, when I get to the more sensitive stuff, that's when I really shop around.
That's a good job. Saves a lot of money.
Well, it's frustrating, but it does tend to save a lot more if we can...
Got to be time-consuming, too.
It is, that's, it's a juggling act.
And that's what I understand, I think I'm not saying to the point that some of the departments see that as time-consuming, I understand, and especially if you're used to re-upping for whatever, three-year period or however long it is, but I...
Then bid three-year contracts.
I would tend to agree with the mayor, that you're either EIE lock-in for that, or let's get it out every year, I don't understand.
That's basically what Bounty's doing, is locking in their prices for a year, so, I mean, there's a benefit to that. Because the price doesn't impact them. It impacts us budgeting.
I just don't know how you know what the price of this stuff is if you don't bid it. What's so difficult about bidding this little thing?
Jim Hayden, EMS Director. Basically, a lot of these medications, the price fluctuates so much that it's important to get regular bids, not just an annual bid to purchase from Boundary. This allows us to just go ahead and order some of these medications when we find them. However, I have found that there are some of these medications that we're able to get cheaper, actually in town, from one of the pharmacies. So I've been trying to keep track of what the prices are at the different places. And if we can get it from Boundary and their price is right, order from them per this contract the way, and maybe I'm doing it right, maybe I'm doing it wrong. But, and also shop around and try and get the best price for some of it. Because some of the drugs are, it fluctuates so much. One dose of glucagon, I found that a pharmacy in town was $187.10. One of the online sources was $600 for that same dose. So it's, there's such a fluctuation, it's worth investigating it every time we order, in my opinion.
You're an innovator, then, Jim.
I don't know.
Why do you need this contract?
I'm just trying to spend it like it's my money, I guess.
So then why do you need the contract, then?
Basically, with Boundary, that's not just, they're giving us one heck of a good discount. So this allows us to actually go ahead and purchase based on those discounts we're getting from them on those. It's just, you know, like I said, when I get to the more sensitive stuff, that's when I really shop around.
That's a good job. Saves a lot of money.
Well, it's frustrating, but it does tend to save a lot more if we can...
Got to be time-consuming, too.
It is. That's, it's a juggling act.
And that's what I understand. I think I'm not saying to the point that some of the departments see that as time-consuming. I understand. Especially if you're used to re-upping for whatever, three-year period or however long it is. But I...
Then bid three-year contracts.
I would tend to agree with the mayor that you're either EIE lock-in for that or let's get it out every year. I don't understand.
That's basically what Boundary's doing, is locking in their prices for a year. So, I mean, there's a benefit to that with some of the other, you know, things that tend to fluctuate quite a bit. We're locking it in for a certain price for an entire year.
Right. But you locked them in a year ago. Now you're just locking them in for the next year without bidding. That's my problem.
So do you make phone calls, Spiral, to you, to check, to make sure that the prices are comparable and/or at a savings? How do we really know if we don't ask?
You're right. We don't. I mean, as far as with Boundary, I know initially in November was when all the initial purchases took place. And the pricing back then was good, I believe, until May. And so as far as going forward, kind of what Jim says is, we have the Boundary to lean on. But then as far as going forward, you know, he can still call and get the other pricing, too, when necessary, as far as the prices that fluctuate.
Well, if you're locked in for a year, and then you have to do another contract and get another bid, your bids go way up. So the contract that you had...
Potentially, they can. And I guess I...
Is for three months?
With approving a contract for that for a year, we're not stuck with purchasing just from them, the way I understand it, unless I'm reading the purchasing guidelines wrong.
We've been into this for three months now?
Yes.
So was that the original contract, was just a three-month contract?
Correct. The initial pricing was just good for the three-month period, from the time they started up on January 1st.
Okay.
And I think that also included what was purchased before January 1st, because they were getting their stock ready so that we could just, you know, spin the wheels January 1st without having to worry about the, that pricing. So I think it was probably five to six months that that was good for.
Did, so Sulan Paramedics use the same company?
Uh, yeah. There's actually two major companies, Boundary and EMP. And behind the scenes, I'm not sure if they're competitors or if they're all under the same label somehow. But those are the two big ones. EMP tends to be about 10% to 15% more than Boundary on their prices for most of these goods.
But do you have any assurance that the prices you're paying now will continue for the next 12 months?
Well, with...
No, you have a total amount here.
With that, yeah, we would have...
Does that mean the prices are, or will you run out of money faster? Are the prices still comparable, or will they...
No, they'll still be pretty comparable. Along a lot of the soft goods, the gauze and things of that nature, the price doesn't really fluctuate that much. And those aren't big-ticket items, anyway. What I'm trying to keep track of a little bit more closely is the big ticket, the medications and things of that nature.
Just remembered. Okay, we'll move on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
C is a resolution approving renewal option one to the agreement of Brian Wildy for the citywide weed abatement program and snow and ice removal from public sidewalks. D is a resolution approving renewal option number one to agreement and cut above lawn care for the citywide abatement program and snow and ice removal of public sidewalks. I would hope that we would bid this next year and not ask for an extension. Please tell me we will.
Daryl Ballack, Code Enforcement Manager. Actually, the pricing structure that's been on this is something that was done approximately nine years ago when I started. I started 11 years ago when we'd been looking at the tracking of it. One contractor we'd spent over $100,000 in one year with, and I felt was, we weren't getting the best pricing we possibly could. So we went in and revised the schedules and looked at great reductions. And understanding that they're going to have your equipment, we reduced them down to about a $35,000 to $35,000 to $40,000 contract a year when we did this. So this pricing structure that these contracts are tied to have been in place for almost nine years.
But these guys have been, they haven't been doing it for nine years.
One of them has, the Wildy has been for over nine years. He's probably been about 12 to 14. MGD has been doing it for about three years now. Last year was the first year we actually started doing contracts with them. We'd otherwise, we had just done an annual agreement with them and took them in place and took their insurances. But it had been brought to our attention that we needed to actually do a contract with them instead. So last year was the first year we brought it forward as a contract.
So you're bidding them next year?
Sure.
Well, I think, if you, the guy's been doing it for three to five years. It's, don't you think it's time you bid?
We sure can. I'm not sure exactly the structure we would use, because we set the prices originally, and these folks are the ones that came forward and agreed to the contracts that we put out. You know, they're mowing an average lawn 12 inches tall for 30 bucks. A lot of lawns out there for even just a normal weekly basis are 15 to 20. But we'll be apt to put it out for bid.
I'm sorry to ask, but I'm moving on.
Okay.
Six is, I actually, I know what's going to happen next year. So six are actions authorizing issues of checks. A is a resolution authorizing payment to WA Klinger for Lewis and Clark Park Facilities upgrades, Phase One project. B is a resolution approving change order number three and authorizing payment to WA Klinger for the Lewis and Clark Park Facilities upgrade, Phase Two project. C is a resolution authorizing payment to Sue Contractors for the Police Fire Headquarters renovation project. Is that project all done? Windows are not leaking. Air conditioning works. We're not pumping 300,000 gallons of water a day during the summertime down the sewer. All that's done?
Standard F A facilities, main supervisor. Correct. Everything's fixed. We got a little bit of carpet to do yet, but...
And we're not dumping 300,000 gallons of water down the drain anymore?
No.
And it's, it's hot and cold where it's supposed to be, when it's supposed to be?
Yes.
And have you seen a reduction in the utility cost?
You know, I haven't followed that. I'd have to check with the police department.
Would you get a little report out for us on that to see?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Seven are applications for beer and liquor license. See the list come forward if you have questions. Anyone to be heard on any of those items? Passes five zero. Eight's a resolution setting a hearing on an amendment to the Main Street self-supported municipal district. P&amp;Z recommends approval, station or downtown partners.
As you can see from your packet, we had a lengthy discussion of this, and it was a vote of six in favor of the SMID and its boundaries, and one opposed. I think the discussion focused on the addition of the Floyd area that is now zoned industrial, or is now, the land use in the current comprehensive plan is industrial. And I think that was, staff's recommendation was not to include it. And based on the fact that our current comprehensive plan, which is presently undergoing revision but has not yet been revised, does classify it as industrial, we did not think it belonged in the SMID at this time.
And it's my understanding, too, that the no vote was due to more the exemption of that, right? Not in opposition of the SMID renewal?
Oh, definitely, yes. I don't like to ever speak for someone's vote, but it was not someone who was opposed to the renewal, per se.
I just wanted to make sure.
Anyone to be heard?
I was curious, part of the background report, and maybe this is a question for...
Maybe for Brent.
Yeah, for Brent or Jeff. But it said, a very large percentage of property owners in the proposed SMID area have signed petitions supporting the renewal. I was just wondering what the percentage was.
Brent Nelson, Senior Planner. We were, excuse me, Reagan was, had... We were above 55% with another 24% expected to come.
I missed you, too, Reagan.
Thanks. For the ownership percentage, 25% is required. We have a support vote of 82%. No response yet from 16% and 2% who are not signing. Of the assessment value, 25% again is required. 71% are in support. No response from 22% and 7% not signing.
And Mayor and Council, the action today is scheduling the hearing for May.
Yes.
Where public input will be sought at that time.
Move the item.
Thank you.
Because that's all we're doing, is setting the date.
Correct.
Yes, but unlike other governmental bodies, we allow them to talk even if it's not exactly on that particular weight. But I'll go ahead and ask for a vote.
Got it.
Couldn't let that one go today. I just had to throw it in. Passes five zero. Nine's a hearing resolution approving plans and specifications for the Tyson Event Center lighting retrofit. I'll move it.
Second.
Passes five zero. Ten's a hearing resolution approving plans and specifications for the Airport Arch Pipe Extension Project. I'll move it. Second. Passes five zero. Eleven's a hearing and resolution assessing a $300 civil penalty against PG Mini Mart 800 Hamilton Boulevard for violation of the Iowa cigarette laws. I'll move it.
Second.
Passes five zero. Twelve's a hearing resolution accepting the proposal of GKD for the purchase of land in the combined Floyd River Urban Renewal Area and authorizing the sale property at 3240 Floyd Boulevard. I'll move it.
Which, which project does this relate to?
This is on the corner of Outer Drive and Floyd Boulevard.
Yeah, but they're doing the trails, aren't they?
They had done a grading agreement with us.
Yes.
Related to that.
We tried, did a land swap with grading and that.
Right.
Yes.
Right.
It's Fred Davenport Estate or Trust, I think.
Okay.
And this was fulfillment of a development agreement for, from a number of years back, 10-plus years ago, I think.
Thank you. All right.
Passes five, four zero, or four to one. Ron, did you vote to no?
I did not.
Well, you're...
That's how it got recorded.
It came up, no.
Well, I didn't want to vote no.
Well, then we'll change the record, okay?
Will you change that for me, please?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Caprin?
Aye.
Breckin?
Aye.
That's right. It's been so boring today. God.
Thirteen, a hearing resolution adopting the annual plan for the Section 8 housing choice voucher program. I'll move it. Second. How many new vouchers you going to get with the new budget that just came out?
Amy Tulley, Housing Services Manager. I don't think that we'll get an increase in vouchers, but we'll receive an increase in funding possibly in order to support leasing up to 100% of the vouchers we've been awarded. Since rental costs continue to increase, we're unable to lease up to 100% of the vouchers awarded. But traditionally, we've been able to utilize 100% of our budget pretty easily.
So all of the gnashing of the teeth around here with the budget fears didn't come true?
Not for us.
That's right. Exactly is what I predicted would happen, Mr. Moore, if you remember, when you were all nervous. We got more money coming. It's a great country, million...
Thanks, Amy.
Thanks.
Only in America. Passes five zero. Fourteen's a hearing resolution adopting revisions to the administrative plan for the Section 8 housing choice voucher program. I'll move that. Passes five zero. Fifteen's a hearing resolution accepting proposal of Windsor Holding Company for anisement in the combined Central Sioux City CBD Urban Renewal Area property at 600 West 7th Street. I'll move it.
Second.
Passes five zero. Sixteen's a resolution adopting the 2018 first quarter supplement to the municipal code, covering ordinance through ordinance number 2018-0233. I'll move it. Second.
Jesus.
Nice going.
Does that hold time? It's broke. That's why we didn't know. But it pops back up.
Passes five zero. Seventeen's ordinance amending chapter 1.01 to provide for the adoption of the municipal code. I'll move that first reading. Second. Passes five zero. Is anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
I'll move it. Second.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Caprin?
Aye.
Breckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
I move second and third. Second. Passes five zero. Eighteen's a hearing on demolition of the, and the declaration of a structure to be dangerous or dilapidated, authorizing the city manager to carry out demolition of the property at 1310, 1312 West 15th Street. Owner Neiman Properties, and you needed to make an amendment to this.
And actually, I misspoke. The amendment will be on item 20 on the agenda. This one is signed as presented.
All right. Go ahead, Daryl.
Daryl Ballack, Code Enforcement Manager. On this structure, the property was red-tagged due to neglect at first, and within a very short amount of time after that, the property did burn, severely burning through the rough structure. So staff has recommended this time demolition.
Who's the owner?
Mike Neiman.
Mike. I'll move that.
Second.
He's not offered to demolish it himself?
Not been responsible at all. Had no insurance either. Had no insurance either. Thank you.
Passes five zero. Nineteen's a motion accepting the recommendation of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board for the design of the Chris Larson Park Riverfront Development Project, deferred from March 26, 2018.
Matt Salvatore, Parks and Recreation Director. Hopefully, you've had some time to digest the numbers and the plans for the project. We've noted your comments regarding fishing, and we're looking into alternative locations for that. So really, at this time, I was going to answer any questions the council has regarding the project.
One last thing with that. I was just talking there about an idea I had in reference to the fishing portion. I understand it's outside of scope, but I was showing a thought. Was that space right there that we were talking about, you know, by the bridge, where I was talking about last week, do you recall? Where is it, the Floyd?
Perry Creek?
At the proposed area, that would be the next ideal location.
And then the other, the idea that I had with that, that maybe we can think about, is also if you use one of those trail bridges, those extra that we had, to put that there, that might be nice to tie into the restrooms on the other side.
Oh, over by the boat ramp?
Huh?
Over by the boat ramp, you're saying?
I think maybe near 232.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's exactly. I even brought a drawing of that.
You bet.
But crossing the Perry Creek? What's that?
Crossing the Perry Creek?
Yeah, I never thought, I never thought of that specifically, but that's, yeah.
I thought then, if you do the fishing on that side on the parking lot side...
Then you can, oh, that's an interesting idea.
And then you just use that trail bridge that I think we had extra...
You might not be able to... So you could almost go like right there?
Exactly.
That's an interesting idea.
Because my thought is, and then the other thing that I was thinking about, this is a little more long-term, Matt, but I think it's worth looking at, is... Is, um, if you do that and you put that bridge there, I would almost put the trail across there. Because then you're not crossing the road in two different spots for the trail. You're keeping the trail on the riverside, and you're not asking them to cross traffic.
Right, we can look into that as well.
Cause I just thought that might be a cool way, and then you're engaging with that memorial feature as well, and running it right across there. But I thought then for the fishing, you're using the parking lot, you're getting them down there, you have the ability to cross to use those restrooms, so don't have to go walk either A, all the way around or back to the B, going around. And then if you tie it in with a trail system, at least then you're not crossing traffic.
That's a lot of merit. We'll take a look at it.
He's thinking about this.
I hadn't thought of putting a structure over, I hadn't thought of putting a structure over the, the mouth of the Perry Creek itself, but yeah, that's some.
And I thought of a structure, I mean, what you're gonna have to do to reach and make sure that it's gonna last. But I was thinking, if you have one of those trail bridges, I thought, in one of our conversations.
We have a bridge.
We're using those on the riverfront trail, but there, we may not be using all the sections, so we might be able to repurpose that.
And it's a pretty small site.
Right now, if you ever go there and observe fishermen, they're typically right in this area, right here.
Yeah.
Oh, they fish right out on that, where that sand is.
Here too?
Yeah.
So anywhere's gonna be.
So wherever it's safe to put the bridge, and then just have a sidewalk going down there and a path of some type.
Yeah, with the parking right here, and then an accessible path coming down here, that would be.
Yeah, and I'm not sure where you can tie the trail through the memorial or in front of the memorial, I'm not sure. But that was just another idea I had, so you don't have to go up and over the, twice on the river.
But would you have a cleaning spot for it too, for the fish?
We have one at the boat ramp, but that's more for the fishermen that are going out in the river with their boats. So there'd be an expense to that if we did it.
Yeah, that's a really nice facility. I don't know how easy it's replicated, but.
Matt, I'll just add that the Riverfront Development Project is a, is a great project. I think it's a terrific location to highlight, highlight the community, the river. As people come in and out of town, it's just a great location. And I know we're only accepting the recommendation for the schematic design tonight, but I will tell you, I am a little apprehensive about the 14.5 million dollar price tag. And, and I, at the same time, look to the future with the aquatic comprehensive plan, that we had plans, although there's no money in the five-year CIP plan, it's out and beyond. But that, I think the CIP book has that at $9 million now, and who knows what it'll be then. So I think money will be an issue, and, and I assume we'll probably have to, and I don't know, phase in, and you'll select, maybe prioritize which amenities you will start with, or?
Correct. This project, along with the one that you mentioned, will definitely need additional resources, grant funds, private donations. In the RCA, we kind of put together a quick grocery list of some funding sources that we're gonna look like, look at for this project. It'd be the same kind of funding sources for that Aquatic Center Project, and Taylor just informed me of another possible funding source.
And, cause it kind of ties a couple of city departments in, but the Tiger Grant or the Transportation Investment Generating Economic Recovery Grant, they kind of focus on DOT projects that are gonna create economic development, quality of life, public health, safety. And then just looking at the recipients for this year, the city of Burlington got 17 million for their riverfront, they call it the Riverfront Revitalization Project. It includes paths, a new waterfront on the community, on gathering areas, some parking lots, and boat ramps. So that could be an area we could look into, I thought just for the bridge, but maybe we could tie in a lot of the other projects into it. So that was just one area that we found this morning, so.
Thank you very much. That's, that's awesome.
We just wanted to share it with you.
Um, I, I want to add one more, one thing here. The riverfront is gonna be the jewel of Sioux City, so we have one shot at it to make it right. So I understand that it's gonna cost a lot of money, but I, but we're gonna have to work hard to make it right. We have many, many really good ideas here, and, uh, there's a couple I'm not real hot on, but that, that can be left for another day. Um, I like the, the arcs that they're talking about, the colored arcs.
Oh, the alternative iconic feature?
I like that. I really like that. I think that's a great idea, because you can have that winter, summer, fall, all four seasons.
Yep.
Ferris wheel, not so hot on, just because you can't have it all four seasons, but. Well, you're not gonna have people riding it all four seasons.
Well, it'd be at Cone Park during the wintertime, see, and then they come back in the spring, summer, and fall, and ride the Ferris wheel.
There's a song like that, swing. We can have that playing, yeah. Well, we have Sioux City Sioux playing. Anyway, I, I'm, I'm very, very excited about this riverfront, and I just wanna make sure that we do it right. It is our jewel, so we have a lot to brag about. When we get it done, it's gonna be beautiful, it's gonna be fun, and it's also gonna be for everybody. So that's huge.
And we were hoping for approval today, and the reason that would be important is that we can start on the campaign process of this project, we can work on the grants, we can do the private fundraising. So that's one of the next steps, along with moving forward with design for this project.
What I like about the project, Matt, is it's bold, but it has a lot of flexibility to it. I mean, it's extremely flexible. You can add to it, you can take away from it as things formulate. I mean, if people wanna talk about the Ferris wheel, they can, and, but that's out there. That's, that's gonna be out there in future years, but.
I, I do have one question. I had somebody ask me about having entertainment, bars, restaurants, is that gonna be an option?
I don't know about the bars, not, not specifically bars and restaurants, but the, the space was designed with events in mind, so you would have the ability to do concerts or multiple concerts at one time, food trucks, that sort of stuff. We'd have electric pedestals available for that type of activity, electricity for concerts. So flexible space, be able to do lots of different things.
Okay.
I think we have to be really clear, though, on commercial development.
Yeah.
Cause you're gonna allow, you're gonna allow some things for events, and there's gonna be a gray area there. Can you, can you have this? Can you have that? You really need to, to really have a bright line as to what's allowed and what isn't. Or we're gonna have a lot of unhappy people.
Well, and probably if it's mobile or frickin' more, I mean, it's just gonna be the biggest distinction, don't you think?
I mean, well, I, I think whether the events are taking place, really.
Well, yeah, but you know what? When you have events, they're different events for different things. So you gotta kind of be flexible on what you're gonna have.
Yeah. A, a few things that I, I've been thinking about, just heard food for thought. Number one, with the opportunity for events and things like that, if we're looking at maybe driving, or setting up a stage, or even driving food trucks and that stuff, look at what you're putting under the sod when you're laying there to kind of bulk it up, so that when people are driving on that, it's not creating the ruts. I know there's a lot of things you put under the sod to kind of bulk that up and make the most of that, or something.
Grass pavers. Grass pavers. You put downtown concrete blocks that the grass grows up through.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we're actually designing the trails and sidewalks, so they're extra thick, so it'd support a semi.
And, and wide enough. I know.
And wide enough.
That as well. I just want us to be forward-thinking when, okay, well, if we did food trucks, they can go through here. If you pull a stage, it could be set up here, just so we make sure. So I wanna make sure that we're not looking at annual extraordinary expenses, you know what I mean, or annual costs that are gonna be exorbitant or just really large. I, one thing that I was thinking a lot about was the Stockyard Garden. I, I really think that attribute to that is needed, and I liked the idea that you had and stuff, and the initial 400K, I think, to kind of design or implement that, but then you also look at plantings every year, what that's gonna be, and what those annual costs are gonna be. And I want us, I was thinking about different things in different parks that I've been to, and obviously, you know, one thing you can do is Falls Park, up in Sioux Falls, and they're not gonna have a lot of the reoccurring expense, because, well, the falls aren't really going anywhere, and you don't have to do much to it. But I'm just thinking, I want us to kind of really have that in the forefront of, okay, well, what is the annual cost that this feature is going to be? You know what I mean?
Yep.
I think that that's just important, because then we're gonna have to continue to budget that out.
I agree.
And I think that has to do with the iconic feature as well, you know what I mean? I'm just looking at the operational costs, whether it's a Ferris wheel, whether it's the arches with fountain piece, I mean, all of those things have pluses and minuses in my mind, and we just have to make that determination.
That was a huge discussion point during our Riverfront Steering Committee meetings. Some of the alternatives that were proposed, we wanna get a real feel for what the maintenance costs, long-term upkeep, before we commit to anything, so that's what we're working with the landscape architect to determine at this point.
Cause my experience with fountains is they can be a heavy guy.
Yeah.
So I appreciate your thought on that.
Yep.
That's something that I was thinking about.
Did you do your assignment for the day?
Uh, could you remind me what my assignment was?
Your assignment was to look up the Dave Seasseo design back in 1990, I think.
Yeah, I'm very familiar with that.
Yeah, we spent a lot of money for basically duplicating what Dave Seasseo basically laid out, but that's okay, cause we do that around here for studies on a regular basis. But he had laid out a lot of this similar type stuff. And I'm glad to see you're all excited, but 1990, everybody was excited, and guess what? Nobody, we didn't do a thing other than get the Anderson Dance Pavilion built, because other councils come along and find it terribly important to cut taxes rather than invest in these type of projects. So the problem is, we spent a lot of money, which is okay, we've done it twice now. But how do we, are we assured that we're going to make this a priority? Because I'm gonna tell you, the next councils that come in here aren't gonna be for this project. I, we didn't build trails, and trails proved that they had a long-term lasting positive impact on our community, but we went 14 years and didn't build trails. So if you don't get the community behind this project from the very beginning, and quickly, I can assure you that before I die, it'll look the same as it looks today. Am I right, Mr. Bernstein? You remember that, Dave Seasseo? You did a great job. He did an outstanding job.
Did an okay job, I think.
He did a great job back then. You know he did. Doesn't matter, we didn't do anything. We had council members at that time that said, don't pave the road around the Anderson Dance Pavilion, put it gravel, cause nobody'll go there. Well, that's not been the case at all. But I, my concern is, just because the council thinks this is a great deal, if the community doesn't buy in and get behind this, it will go nowhere. But you have to remember too now, Mayor, you've got the, you've got the Parks and Rec. Doesn't, we had a Parks and Rec back in 1990. Really active today. We had a very active Parks and Rec. And we got downtown. And then you brought in a council or two that said, we don't need parks, and they did away with it. Okay, and we got downtown partners. They're very active, very supportive.
They're gonna put a hundred grand a year towards it.
Got the Riverfront.
Yeah, but the bottom line is, the council can cancel it. You know, does it matter? Doesn't matter what everybody says out there, you know?
That's all my concern is, we need to get out, and we need to sell this to the Shatomas, the Rotaries, the church groups. We need to let the people know what we're doing here, and we need to make sure that we tell them that we're not locked into any one thing 100%, but this is conceptual design, and get some feedback. Because my concern is exactly what I'm saying. I've been here, I was in this chair when we did the Dave Seasseo thing, and everybody thought, finally, we're gonna do something with that weed patch, but it's really, alls we did was.
In the long run here, it, it's actually worked out better, because we had the interstate going through, we got, got all that now.
It was laid out. We couldn't have, that's not true, because we couldn't have done things in that, because we didn't have the right of way. The DOT would have never given us, to us even back then. It was laid out in the same footprint as what you have today.
Really?
Yeah, so. Uh, one more thing that really is a concern, is you have to determine the order of build, in my opinion. Because if you don't determine the order of build, it'll be, it'll just be too big of a project. And I don't care if you build from east to west or west to east, but if we start trying to do a segment here, a segment there, it's not gonna work. We need to start on one end and work to the other. Don't you think? Otherwise, if you're gonna try to.
Yeah, we're trying to figure out the best, I've been working with the landscape architect to try to determine the scope of services, how we'd approach, because a lot of it's dictated by fundraising. So if we have a private donor that wants to do something on the east end.
Well, okay, if you've got a guy that wants to write a big check, that's, you can, you can.
We wanna keep it flexible enough to be able to say, this is a priority to this person, we wanna be able to do it.
Maybe one standing in the chamber today. Go ahead.
I was just gonna say.
Name an address, please.
Uh, Dave Bernstein, 208 Court Street, Sioux City, Iowa. Um, I, working with Matt on the committee, that's worked with the architects as well. I think they've done a good job of taking the, the design as the riverfront is laid out now, especially in the former boat site, and really coming up with a lot of ways to activate those areas, including the event lawns, the use of food trucks, water features, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, we have pushed on the fishing thing, and I, I personally appreciate you guys pushing as well, because I think that revisiting that is, is important. Um, but I, I think they've done a really, really good job of, of considering all that and taking it maybe to a different level than it was at before. Part of what we pushed for early, I think, in the meetings that we had, was to say, the city really shouldn't necessarily be asked to do anything but the base infrastructure for the riverfront, which I can't remember what that number is, but all these additional amenities would need to be sponsored or underwritten, whether it's through grants, whether it's through private donations. I mean, you can see something like the Stockyard Garden funded by someone with an interest in that, for naming rights, not unlike a lot of other things. Other, other elements out there as well, and, and clearly, if fundraising from different foundations and endowments and, and corporate and private individuals isn't successful, you wouldn't do a lot of the stuff that's, that's in the, um, in the plan. But on the flip side of that, you have to start with the bigger plan, I think, to be able to go out and try and reach that goal. Otherwise, we'll never get there. So I think the, the point here is that there's a number of us who are willing to go try and raise the money from grants and, and private, to try and really make it, um, you know, something that really, it, it's the interest of the city. And from the, from the south, the interest from the city, from the north is pretty good at this point. And it's a great opportunity, probably a unique, once-in-your-life opportunity, um, our, our lives, to, to be able to do something like this. So the hope is that we can come up with something that makes sense, and at least have other elements on the shelf. Not unlike the airport, when all we were gonna do is add some restrooms, and pretty quick, we got a new airport by accident, cause the money came along from the federal government that you love so much.
This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. It happened in 1990, then nothing happened. So this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. In 2017, I hope something happens.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, and a lot of projects.
I've been supporting from day one of this.
Yep.
But we just have had no action.
All we can do is try. I mean, the Orpheum was stagnant for a long time, the museum was stagnant for two tries before it worked, so hopefully this one as well. Uh, the other thing is, hopefully, down the road, you guys will consider a broader scope beyond this side of the interstate and look at both sides, uh, because there's some really good potential, including some, you know, potentially limited appropriate commercial potential on the, I guess it would be the north side of the interstate as well. And with the interstate reconstruction, it really is a unique opportunity to have all this kind of gel at the same time, the Ag Expo, everything else, so.
When the DOT gets, finally gets done, and probably year 2025, we'll look at those opportunities.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and with the other DOT things in the works, I mean, there really is a much broader potential here. We, and we have pushed the architects very, very hard on some of the elements, a lot of things, and will continue to do so. But they do seem to be really good, and they seem to have a great focus, and it'd be great to be able to go on to the next step with them, to bring this thing to fruition.
For sure.
Thanks, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
Anyone else?
One last thing I did wanna say though, too, that I, a concern that I was talking with another constituent about was about the exiting off of the interstate to the park. I was trying to visualize where you exit, and I was just thinking, and let's start by you telling me, where am I gonna exit when I wanna go to this park?
Same as almost now. Uh, your access, your vehicular access will be off Hamilton and off Floyd. Now, there is a, a new opportunity, the way that the Virginia underpass is being constructed, or bikes and pedestrians can access through, by the frontage road.
But I'll be able to do Floyd.
Absolutely.
Only forty cars.
About forty stall, forty, forty parking stalls, but there is a turnaround area.
It's not a through street. You're gonna get off and get 40 cars or 70 cars, depending on whether you get off at Hamilton.
Yeah, yeah. No, I understand that, but I just, I'm thinking of people, when they're driving on the interstate, and they're like, wow, I really wanna stop and check this out, and all these people, as they're driving by, and then they take Floyd and hop off.
Correct.
And then they can park there.
Correct.
And there's an opportunity too, that we need to think down the road.
There's still an exit off of Floyd? Right off of Floyd.
Yeah.
Because that's where I was concerned that I didn't think there was, so I'm glad there is.
No, it's not.
By the Andersons.
Yeah, you got to come off on like Nebraska Street.
I'm going to try to envision this better, but, um.
You're going to have to take that frontage road. Basically, you're going to take what you're taking today, basically, and drive through there.
That's what I thought, you get off and you run parallel to it, and then you go down to Floyd and in, right?
Yes.
Okay. Because I think, too, you won't have a lot of parking there, but I think, to Dave's point, the other thought is then, looking at the north side of the interstate down by Floyd, I mean, I think we've talked about that before, but that's another opportunity for another parking lot or some type of thing to go.
If the DOT will let you have it, you're at their mercy.
Yeah, so I mean, I think that's something we need to be proactive.
We're having those discussions with the DOT along, along with where the boundary line actually is between their property and our property. Yep.
Yeah, I was just wondering, when we pass this, what's your outline? Where, where are you going from here?
So we'll work on a scope of, uh, services with our landscape architect to do design, continue with the design, and then we'll jump right into grants and our private campaign to fund, uh, the additional amenities above and beyond the base costs.
So in, in FY19, we just basically have the money for further design work?
Correct. Yep.
So we're probably talking another summer before we get going.
Yes. There's the opportunity to possibly do some grading prior to the interstate being completed in 2020.
I would really hope that's the case.
Yeah. And the way it's structured, we would have the funding to be able to do that.
Unless you win the lottery and would like to throw a few million at it, we can start early on your part of the deal.
You can count on it.
Let's get it done this time, because when the mayor comes back in 20 years.
Except for his third tour.
We should donate $2 a week, buy two tickets, and just keep moving.
It'll be 97.
Yeah, that's, that's one other thing that I've talked a lot about. I think the sooner we get going, especially moving dirt, the better. I don't understand why we won't be able to move dirt. I hope that's the case.
Thanks for all the work.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for your support.
I know the committee members that are here as well, I appreciate all your work on that as well. I know it's been a lot of time and energy.
Thank you.
Barely hanging on, you guys. Pass is 5-0. 20 is a resolution approving agreement with Residential Equity Partners to remediate deficiencies at 722 Nebraska, 19-1093, and 2018-0232. I'll move it.
Dara Ballack, Code Enforcement Manager, um, after the meeting last Monday, uh, the finance, uh, financial institution that's helping to fund this project uh, made a request through Paul Bernard, the, the owner of the structure, um, that they needed it, the title work to be rescended, uh, the. Maybe our legal staff can help clarify that.
Yes, the last line of the resolution, um, rescends Resolution Number 2018-0232. Uh, the date inadvertently says April 2nd, it should be March 26th. We would ask that it would be revised accordingly.
I'll move the amendment first.
Second.
So, um, what are you saying? Are you taking the placard off so they can?
No, the placard remains intact, and what it is, is the demolition portion of it. And what we did, the action we'd taken before amended that demolition order. And what this does is it actually rescends that demolition order, um, so that the funding source can move forward with their, with their portion of it. We did receive confirmation from that funding source that that would be there, and in addition to that, we do still have the bond.
So i- is that like a 90-day stay?
No, it is not. It is a recension of that demolition order completely. Before it was, it, before it was amended to a stay.
Okay.
That takes us out.
So this is just so he can.
Yeah. Staff, yeah, staff does support this resolution.
Okay.
If the agreement, um, isn't executed and the bond isn't received, we've given Mr. Bernard some time to revise the bond. He had produced one last week for the city. Uh, if that bond isn't received, then the city manager would have the ability to redirect that the demolition order be placed back on the property. But as long as the terms of the agreement and the bond are received, then Mr. Bernard could proceed forward. And we've received representation that, um, he'll have the bond to us shortly.
Okay. Well, we appreciate all that. I just don't want to, you know, how we go through this demolition thing, so.
And in order to come back and bring this back to council, we did ask for a letter um, from Mr. Bernard's lender indicating that the financing had been secured, but for the demolition order that was still remaining on the title of the property. And he did provide that to us.
So, okay, so after, after the purchase, how soon will you be getting, getting to taking care of it? Or getting to fixing it up and whatever you're going to do with it?
Uh, Paul Bernard, uh, with Residential Equity Partners. My address is 1280 Monument Boulevard in Concord, California. The, the short answer is, uh, immediately. Uh, I've already engaged with an architect. We already have concept drawings. I've already engaged with two different, uh, hazmat cleanup crews. There is asbestos in the building and some other hazards. We're going to take care of those right away. We have a general scope and a structure for an RFP to go out to bid for the major part of the renovation now. So as soon as we get the bad stuff cleaned up, we can go in and verify some things and move immediately to, to going out to bid. So the longer answer is, uh, the hazmat now and the major part of the renovation as soon as it warms up a bit, uh, this spring for sure.
But this can't happen until you purchase it, so.
He owns it.
He owns it.
I, I already own the property, and, and the demolition bond that was mentioned a moment ago uh, is for one year, and the edit that needs to be made is, is calling out the specific resolution. It's just a clerical change, but the bond itself is already in place for the entire year.
Okay.
Do you use a local architect?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. So the letter we talked about last week isn't working. Is that what you're telling me? That's why this came back?
Correct. The letter did take place, and it was sent back, but, um.
So your letter rejected the letter?
We need the demolition item removed completely from the title.
With what is.
You're saying that's legal and that's your job, and you're, you're all okay with your.
Yeah, I'm okay with this. I worked with legal. Um, we went through all the aspects that we would need to make sure that the city was protected and that we were doing it within our guidelines, and I feel very comfortable with it.
So, so a year comes and goes. What happens after that? And that, and let's just say nothing happens. I, I know you're saying it's going to happen. I believe you.
With the red tags.
Look at the, let's, what hap, what happens if?
With the red tags still in place, if they've lived up to all of their portions of it, say, getting it moving forward and what have you, we do have the bond in place, we could use that, and we'd bring it back to council. Council would act on the demolition order at that time, after, if there was a failure, council could take that, since we still have the red tag in place. We still have that authority to bring it back for that.
How soon can you legally and responsibly remove the red tag, the placard notice?
Depending on the advancement of the, of the, um, work that's being done there, once they've taken out building permits, we've got building permits in place, and we've done the initial hazards, the contract has been hired to do the work, that kind of thing, we can remove those, that red tag so that it can continue under the building permits.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Yes, sir, there's another item to address your, your concern, and that's an agreement. It, it's an if, then else. If I fix the place up, then, then I can, uh, then you're not going to knock it down, or else you will. So, uh, or else.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So what, what was the reference to, a year? Are we given?
The bond, when you, when you purchase the bond, the bonds are good for a year.
Oh, the bond's good for, but we're not giving the whole year before we make a decision to move forward, okay.
The agreement does reference the year time period in the bond. Um, the new agreement that's being executed is a year to complete what he's saying he's doing. And if it's still in a status, then we would proceed forward and put the demolition order back on.
So I, I agree with, uh, Mr. Moore, that I think you appear to be lining everything up, and you're going to do the work, but if that were not to happen, we would have to wait one solid year before we could take any action?
The way that the agreement is currently drafted, as it indicates, the owner agrees to make all necessary repairs to the above-described premises within one year of April 2nd, 2018. The repairs required are set forth on the attached document labeled Exhibit A.
That, that bothers me a little if, if things don't start going. I don't know how you change it if three months from now, nothing's been done, but when you look at some of the deficiencies, salvagers have removed the elevator and doors, and Daryl, you've mentioned this several times. Doors leaving an open six-foot, six-story elevator shaft with several feet of water at the bottom. The lower south level of the structure has an empty swimming pool. Those kinds of things, I don't know.
They were all like that when, when they first.
Yeah, back in July.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm kind of wondering why that didn't all get taken care of by now.
I'm just worried that somebody's going to get into there and get hurt.
Yes, sir. Part of the very first, uh, the first session we're going to have is to make the building nearly inaccessible. Uh, there's a couple of second and third-story windows that apparently are entry targets. Uh, th- those are, we're actually going to weld a piece of sheet steel across the window itself uh, to the metal frame. There's a couple of doors in the back that have been accessed a few times. They're relatively secure. We're just going to weld them closed and have one pedestrian entry for us to go in and out of the building for the, for the hazmat cleanup.
Well, you know what? With all due respect, that's what was supposed to happen in July, and it didn't.
Y- yes, ma'am, some of that did happen, and they've broken in again and found another way in.
Some had, didn't happen right away, that we were told was supposed to, so.
So how, how long do you think it'll be before we, you're able to move forward? How long should it take you to?
I'm very optimistic by nature, and I'm already moving forward, hoping for a, a yes vote today. So, uh, you'll see, uh, action and requests for demolition permits, at least on the hazmat portion, uh, imminently, uh, as soon as I get a scope put together, which could be as soon as, uh, sometime this month, uh, within weeks of, for sure. I have a hazmat cleanup scope that was repaired, uh, three and a half years ago. The building hasn't changed since then, so I, I don't imagine that it's too much different. So we're going to go with that and amend that hazmat scope and, and get on it.
Daryl, when that happens, can you send us the email?
Sure.
Who do you have to do that, ESA or who?
ESA is on a very short list. There's, uh, there's two individuals, including, uh, one recommended to us by the architectural firm that we've engaged.
The city attorney referred to this agreement. This isn't signed?
It has not been signed.
And there's, and I don't, on my copy, I don't have an exhibit that you referred to, Exhibit A.
And that's Exhibit A that Daryl will provide. It's the deficiency list.
Which is the deficiency letter which has been brought to council. That's, uh, that, uh, Mr. Greckin was reading from.
The agreement going to be signed? It isn't normally signed that when you get the.
This was added very last minute at the end of the agenda process last week. So normally, it is executed beforehand.
You have two items that were added.
Yeah.
I've read through the agreement. I'm agreeable to sign it now.
It's, Dan, it's the next page from the front page of the RCA. Resolution number, and then it lists everything on there.
They were added amendments, weren't they?
Yeah, but I'm looking at the actual agreement, and it doesn't have the exhibit on it.
Correct, there is not an Exhibit A. It needs to be added, and it would be the information that's contained in the resolution, listing the exterior and the interior deficiencies.
So that'll be signed today, then?
Yes, we can have an execution copy signed today.
Did I sign?
I'm sorry.
Did I sign?
Tomorrow then, will you?
We can take care of it right after the council meeting.
Absolutely.
Today.
All right.
Okay.
On the amendment?
Waters. Caprin.
Aye.
Redkin.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Now on the resolution, vote electronically? Shall we vote? Who you need? Me? I might hit it. It's not going, but. Well, it's not going to go. There it went. Pass is 5-0. I would suggest, though, that you get right on this, because our lady council member really gets nasty with these if you don't do what you say you're going to do, so.
It's not pretty. I'm really sorry. Not good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
21 is a resolution announcing the intent to move forward upon receipt of final cost with Segment 2 of the I-29 Reconstruction Project. Have the DOT boys come on up. We want them close for when we have questions.
Dave Carney, Public Works Director, uh, Darwin and Dean can probably speak better to the details of this, but, uh, as you've received a memo and it's outlined in the RCA, we had, under their contract, we're installing a 36-inch sanitary sewer and a casing pipe. They've tried to make the bore. They are unable to proceed as they had intended by the plans, and they are looking to make a significant change, which is going to end up costing us in the neighborhood of 1.7 to 1.9 million dollars more than the initial $700,000 contract.
So this is their casing or ours?
It's ours.
Why is it under their contract?
It's, I, I'm not sure exactly why it was bid that way, but I'll.
I can speak to that, Mr. Scott. Um, Mayor Scott, I'm sorry. Um, the.
You know me well, and I'd say Bob Darwin.
The city staff and their consultant worked, put this plan together, and then since we were in the area doing the interstate work, they asked. They asked if they could put it on our contract and hopefully get a lower price, and.
My problem is, whose property is it?
It is, it is DOT property. It's our right-of-way, but it, you guys got a permit to ask to put it underneath our property.
But if I were to go today and say to you, "You did the bores, I didn't do the bores," and we uncover this major cleanup, now all of a sudden, if you were doing it, if you were, this bore were for you, because it's your property, you'd have to clean it up.
We would have to, if it was our pipe, we would have to pay for the, the, uh, work.
But why should we clean up your contaminated site?
Uh, it's not necessarily contaminated site, it's just, uh, the, the soil borings we had showed debris all throughout the I-29 area. We had pipes that had to be jacked underneath, and the city had pipes on, on our contract that had to be jacked underneath. We've been able to get through everywhere. It's just this one where we've come to, where we, we are not able to get underneath with the size of pipe we're, we're using.
Well, your bore guy, I mean, how do you miss this much garbage?
Like I said, they were on the borings all the way through, and unfortunately, this time, he's not able to miss the garbage.
But on the soil borings that were included in the plans, it didn't show that.
Not, not, and the ones that were in this area did not show it.
But I don't understand, I mean, Mid-America, when they have a bad gas site, like over here, it's, if somebody does something, they're still there, cleanup. It's their, it's their site. But the city of Sioux City, I know you don't want to hear it today, but we started at 16.6 million with your estimates, not ours. We're up to 33 million, now we're going to be 35 million. And the city of Des Moines had this crap, and they got, they got it taken care of by the DOT and the federal government. And you know what? The system's not very fair when that happens, Darwin. I'm chewing on you, but this is ridiculous. The state has some responsibility. You own this, you own this soil. It's not the city soil. God knows, we can't even get on early, the north end of the south end of it, until you're done with the whole project. I've heard that.
I totally understand your point of view. We're just administering it according to the agreement.
Well, I think there's, I think there's probably your side to how you interpret the agreement, and we're going to look into it to our side, because certainly down the road, there has to be some way to at least mediate or arbitrate this. I mean, we have to move today. We're stuck. But if the DOT's contract is so ironclad, that none of this is your responsibility, when it's your contaminated site, that's bothersome that cities will be stuck for this forever. This is just ridiculous. It's, it's unbelievably ridiculous.
I, I totally understand your concerns.
And you're telling me nowhere in the state this has happened, has this, has the DOT accepted any of the costs?
I, I can't speak to the rest of the state. I'm up here in District 3. I've been up here in District 3 for 25 years, and, and we are administering it according to the agreement we have.
Well, it's unfortunate. We're at a point where our attorneys haven't even had a chance to look at this contract. But yet, we're with a gun to our head tonight, saying, "You guys got to do this." And I really don't like having a gun to my head. I really don't. I don't, I don't operate very well under those circumstances. I, you know what I normally do, and I'll be doing it tonight, because I don't care if you push the pipe under. We got a pipe there that's there now. I don't understand if that pipe's good, why are, why are we even pushing another pipe under?
Well, the federal government, FHWA, requires all pipes underneath the interstate to be. Well, the federal government, FHWA, requires all pipes underneath the interstate to be encased.
We're gonna let them pay for this, then, the extras. That's ridiculous. It, it, you know, it's our taxpayers, our ratepayers, that have taken every cost overrun on this job. It's not gonna be a good deal for our citizens. I, I don't, I'm sorry. I appreciate what the DOT is doing, but in the end, we're gaining one lane of traffic and thirty-five million dollars worth of cost that we wouldn't have enjoyed if we'd have just not done this project, but we were, we were basically forced to, 'cause the DOT said, "We're running three lanes through your town."
Totally understand your frustration.
Well, fine, two million dollars to solve my frustration. We'll be friends. Thank God I love your wife and family, but... Oh, you need to give your ad, and, and he said his name, but say your name and address.
Twenty-one, seven fifty-eight, three hundred and twentieth Street, Sioux City, Iowa.
Well, I'm sure the rest of you are gonna vote for us, so let me make a motion so we can get the heck out of here, but-
Well, and that's just my thing, and Dave and I spoke, and I just don't know what options we have, you know what I mean?
I mean, we looked at the-
I'm new enough to this council where it's just like, "Look, you tell me what we have to do." I'm with the mayor. Obviously, I have extraordinary, extraordinary frustration over this project and the increasing cost, and trust me, I plan on speaking with our senators and delegation in DC about it to see what we can do, but at this point in time, it's, it's, our hands are tied.
And I mean, we looked at options. If we just canceled the contract and rebid it and all that, and the cost we were gonna incur was gonna outweigh any savings we were gonna have, we were, we looked at, uh, if we forced them to stick to the fifty-one inch, just switching from the method of the pilot board to the TBM, but the fact is, is they're very concerned that they, they could start that method and still not be able to get any further, and then we'd be right back to where we're at with incurring more costs, 'cause the thing is, we've just kept incurring costs as, as they began to hit, uh, debris, and they were trying to get through it, and they've just gotten to the point where they're, they're, they're making such little progress on it that it just has gotten-
It's racking up days in costs.
Yeah, it's racking up the costs to be, so that's when they came back, and they have come forward with this option of the much larger bore, which costs us a significant amount of money.
They're, they're saying this now, they can't get through, so they get extra money, because they relied upon the borings.
Two thousand a day.
And Mayor and Council, the normal process to approve a change order would be that it would come back with an addendum to the original contract for the council approval. My understanding is that there has not been a change order that's been prepared to date, um, 'cause this is new information. Um, this is announcing the council's intent, but it's subject to receiving that documentation for the council to look at with the estimated costs and what the cost scope is. We haven't received that documentation. At least, I'm not aware that we've received that.
This is, this is delay days, and then finalize all the paperwork and change orders to get the actual number to us. And Dean, I don't know what your timeframe you think is on that.
How, how many delay days have we had so far?
Dean Herbst. I live in twenty-four fifty-eight Fifth Avenue Southeast in Lamar's, Iowa. Right now, just in this last iteration, we've had three weeks of delay, just trying to figure out how to move forward. Over the course of-
So, we're paying two thousand dollars a day times three weeks right now. Is that what you're saying?
Seven days?
Five. Five. On the weekends, those aren't, those aren't counting.
And I have not seen that portion of the contract to determine if that's an overall project delay, two thousand dollars a day, or if it's just related to the sanitary sewer piece of this. Maybe Dave is aware I've not. I haven't received the documentation to review that.
That's just related to the sanitary sewer issue. Yes.
But I'm asking that, why, why can't we just tell them, "Hey, you bid the job. Punch the hole"?
That was my first option, to keep going, but there's, there's items in the contract for delays for removing garbage, and that was actually my first option, but we brought it to the city to minimize costs. The chances are, if they keep fighting the garbage the way they've gone, where they're going six feet a week, the, the cost could be astronomical, astronomical to do that.
So, how are they gonna get through now?
By going to larger bores, it's gonna allow them to bring in debris, allow for the, the person that has to, right now, they're going, their initial bore is a thirty inch bore. Every time they hit a piece of garbage, they've gotta send a guy up that thirty inch bore with an air hose and try to cut the debris out and pull it out of the hole and bring it back, and they wanna go to the eighty-seven, so they can easily bring it through and move more quickly, and then, and they believe that the cost will offset, the larger diameter cost will be offset by what they would've had if we just continued to fight these delays.
How do you know that that won't get caught up?
Yeah. Well, that's, we're-
Good God, yeah, 'cause that, then what if that happened?
But that's the thing. You're, you're getting a much-
You have more garbage than you thought there was.
But it's a si, but it's the size of the garbage you're able to bring through the opening. Now, you're working with an eighty-seven inch opening instead of a thirty inch opening, and then, and then, and the way they're-
It's not the size of a car. Are you just afraid that it's-
And, and, and what they're going, what they're going through right now is they have a thirty inch, and then they're fouling it with a, a fifty-one inch. Well, every piece of garbage they're hitting and cutting out of that thirty inch, well, it's still outside that thirty inch pipe, so when they bring the fifty in, they're gonna hit it again. And, and, and in the method they're using now, now with the TBM, it's all being done in one, in one push-through, and that opening is completely open the first time.
Wow.
So, you have one guy down there taking all the, everything out, right?
Mm-hmm.
Thirty inch pipe.
Yeah.
Okay, but it's gonna be, okay, it's a thirty inch right now, but it's, it's gonna be a fifty-one?
Give me an eighty-seven is what they're gonna-
Eighty-seven. Okay, so that seems like the pictures that I saw, the, the small one, the guy's kinda humped over. The big one, he can stand up.
The pictures you got, that was a fifty-one inch that the guy's kinda slumped through, and it's kinda reached through the hole, and then the one he's completely standing up, it is the eighty-seven.
And that's the one that you're talking about, right?
How could you miss that in a boring? I mean, that's unbelievable.
And that's, was Terricon who was the boring?
Terricon did the borings.
We did the borings?
That's the other thing, is how can you not go back on them and feel like, "We paid you to tell us whether or not there was garbage"? We paid you so that we knew what to bore this.
Yeah, what was under the ground.
Well, the thing is, is they, how far did they bore in? I mean, that, that, that's probably where half the, or bore down.
I mean, they took hundreds of bores. I mean, there's, there's, there's literally hundreds of bores. It's just-
But, but were they close together? Were they way far apart? Because, because you, you got quite a, you got a ways into it, and then you ran into this big old black hole every day, don't you?
Typically, typically, the soil borings are taken every two hundred feet, but in, in situations where you have a structure like this or a bridge, then they take extra borings in that location. To be able, to say specifically, I don't have that at my fingertips, but it, they're, they're fairly close in this location, and I, I don't wanna give an exact number, but they're fairly close. Closer than two hundred feet.
And nothing led you to believe that this was gonna be a problem?
That was the information that was in the plans. Yes.
From them.
So, i- if you did bore there, was there another spot where you could've bored to? I mean, could you got around it?
We, we've, we've looked at that, was do we, do we try to move over with the same method somewhere else? But there's no, with, with the, what we've, information we have, it's a complete gamble, and then you're gonna pay all the re-
Yeah.
Removing, there's a pit all over again, and you could-
This right down by the Perry Creek? Is that where I see him born?
Between Perry Creek and Westaway.
So, what is, so it's garbage that you find, or it's rock? It's gotta be concrete, rock?
Brick.
A dump. It was a dump. The interstate was built on a dump.
So, it's, you know what? I think Sioux City's building a dump. I, I mean, it seems like it, everywhere you go.
The whole riverfront was a dump. If you go over, if you go across-
Yeah, look, look at Tyson.
No, but if you go across-
Building a dump.
If you go the kitty corner across where the, uh, the merd center is, and you go the corner right where the interstate is, it's full of tyline and that. We know that from past borings. You could, don't light a match over there if you do a bore, right?
Well, that's another thing with boring, where we're at, because don't you have to be careful about that also? If you're on a dump and, and you got a guy down there, I mean, he's gotta have air, right?
There were some concerns that there were contaminated soils. We did testing. There was benzene in there, not level enough to be hazardous, but they were still concerned about a confined space with a guy in there and a thirty inch pipe, so they were blowing and sucking air out of there to keep fresh air in there as he was in there.
I bet they are, yeah.
Well, I'd feel much better having him doing the right thing. I mean, I, I, you know, I don't think we have a choice here, but...
Mayor, you tell me what choice we have. You know what I mean? I mean, I-
Well, the problem is, you got a third-party agreement. I think Terricon has some responsibility here. I don't think there's any doubt. They have some responsibility. You guys can disagree, because it's a closed-knit society, I understand, and we never, we never, we always protect those of us in that industry, but to me, they have a problem here, and the problem is the contract's with you, not with us. And you guys aren't gonna go after them, so I don't know what we do.
Why can't we?
'Cause we're not a party to the contract.
Exactly.
Our agreement is a reimbursement agreement with the DOT.
Practice law again. I'm sorry. Excuse me, Mr. Moore.
Spot on, Mayor.
Okay, let's vote.
We've exhausted everything, though, you're telling me.
We've, we've looked at all the different options that we could think of that would come, that we thought might save us money, and we couldn't find one that was gonna be a-
But we're not waiving any rights of, under the current contracts we have if we take this action today. In other words, I mean, I'm really uncomfortable. The city attorney hasn't reviewed any of the contracts to get up to speed, so we're doing that blindly, and if I'm reading this memo right, and I've read it three or four times sitting here, and I still, I, I'm trying to understand it, we still don't know that those are the actual cost.
No.
Basically says in here, "No one knows what they're gonna be", so for sure, it's gonna be one point seven million, for sure.
I think that's the bo, I think that's the bottom.
That's the bottom.
Yeah, I think you're-
I can guarantee it is now that you made that statement, 'cause if you think that contractor's not gonna be listening today, you're wrong. You don't have to encourage him, Dave.
Based on the prices we've seen so far, I, I believe.
Well, that, why would that be the bottom? They should know. Other than if they run into something that they don't see. But come on, now, that should be the price.
So, in this whole-
These guys are the experts. Now, they're telling you what we need to do. Then we oughta hold them responsible for that.
So, the way I've approached this is I've asked the contractor to give me a good estimate of what's, what's needed, because at this point, there's a lot of things that need to be developed as far as making sure that everybody would be on board with this kind of significant change. You are correct. We have not gone, I've not gone through all the details and every dollar and every number, but that's something that I'm going through as, uh, getting their work hours, getting their payrolls, getting the material costs, getting actual invoices to verify the numbers that they're giving me. So, those are things that I do not have at this point in time, but it's something that I wanted them to give me a ballpark estimate that they felt was accurate enough to be able to have people make a decision of this kind of magnitude. If it's something that can be pursued, then now I'll go forward and get that, kinda get down to the details to be able to answer that question better.
Our city attorney would like a copy of the contract as quickly as you can get it to her, please. Fax it over to Dave, so he's got it. Or email it, whatever.
So, th- then this memo also says these additional costs will be funded by the CIP budget over the fiscal years twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two. Is that-
Is you're using that, that state?
Completed, we have three fiscal years to pay. They divided, and this will be state revolving fund, uh, financed.
Is that what the seven hundred, two thousand? That's how that was gonna be paid? And now we're up to two point four million?
I thought we had twenty years to pay.
Two point six.
Well, that's, yeah, with the SRF funding, but we have to pay the state back in three years.
Oh, I see.
And that, that, that's done with SRF.
The base agreement had indicated that the first installment was due upon completion of construction and billing, and the final two installments will be, um, billed out in one and two years, subsequent to the date of the first billing.
See, I, right or wrong, I'm not hung up on this two thousand dollars a day. I wanna try to do what's right for the taxpayers overall. So, my question might seem silly to you, but what's the minimum we could do today? We don't have to... What's the minimum we could approve so they could, you're saying that we wanna continue to do the work, correct?
Well, you're not actually approving any downer mine. You're just saying that you're okay with us proceeding or, or going to, going to the change order. They didn't wanna go through all the change order work for, just to bring raw forward, and you guys say, "No, this is the intent". Yeah, we, we wanna, we wanna go this route and go up to the eighty-seven, and then finalize the dollars, which will still have to come back to you guys for an official amendment to the agreement.
So, can you waive the two thousand a day?
It's not theirs. It's the contractor.
The contractor's getting paid to sit.
Yeah.
But I still don't understand how you, to bail out of this contract, how you guys are telling this is just, it's a million six. That's an unbelievable contract, if that's the case. You guys have gotten out of contracts and not paid the full, full deal before, and that's basically what you're asking us to do, is pay the full contract, even though they don't, even if we cancel it.
We're not asking you to do that. I mean, you guys can get out of the contract and, and pay-
But your gentleman says a million six, seven, or something, I read.
That's, yeah.
Well, that's baloney.
Well, that's what, I mean, that's what, that's what the number they're giving us. I'm just, I, I think-
Your guys, your con, when the contractor does work for you and you, you cut the contract, you pay them the full price, basically? No.
Absolutely not. We would just pay the cost incurred up to that point.
But that's a million seven. What was the original contract?
About seven hundred thousand.
Seven hundred and two thousand, the RCA says. So, how is it a million seven to get out of a seven hundred thousand dollar contract?
I'd, I'd, I'd have to get the details to you, but there's the cost of the pipe that they've already incurred.
Sure.
The downtime that they've already been through.
Yeah.
Extra work that they've already done, trying to get through the garbage that they've-
We didn't authorize that.
No, some of them were, some of them, there was, um, unit prices for the debris removal and, uh, when they, when they lost production due to-
Listen, we didn't authorize them to go to the fifty-four. Who authorized it? Not us.
No, that was what was designed, was the fifty-one was the design, the fifty-one inch casing.
You're talking they were doing a thirty or something?
They, they went through, they, they did a pilot hole, and then after the pilot hole, then they came through with a thirty, and then followed the thirty was gonna be a fifty-one that's, that's-
Well, it doesn't matter, but I don't believe you-
It was the method that they-
I don't believe for one minute that a seven hundred thousand dollar contract now is gonna cost us a million seven. I don't believe that, because they aren't gonna perform the work. They're not gonna place the pipe. They're not gonna place the casing. So, how in the world could you have a million seven on a seven hundred thousand? That doesn't make any sense to any layman sitting here.
Bob, they're talking more than a million seven.
I know they are.
Yeah, over and above the-
I know. That's my, I'm saying they're telling you it's a million seven to get out of the contract. How does it cost you a million seven to get out of a seven hundred thousand dollar contract? If they don't do anything other than try to punch a hole through? Boy, I wanna work for you guys. I thought I wanted to be an engineer, and I wanted to be a lawyer. Now, all of a sudden, I wanna be a DOT contractor, I think. 'Cause I don't get this stuff. I don't get how a seven hundred thousand dollar contract, we have to pay a million seven to get out of it. You'd be, I mean, if I'm a contractor, I wanna get out every contract you guys ever, ever put out there.
We've got, all, all I know, I haven't looked at the exact one point seven, but, but the, the cost they've got, the materials for the thirty inch casing and the fifty-one inch casing, the downtime they've got.
So, we're paying for the casing, whether they put in that hole or not?
Uh, they've ordered it, and they don't want it, so we would have to pay for it.
They said they'd take it back for-
For half.
For half.
Yeah, I think it's five hundred thousand dollars.
Like, they aren't gonna use that somewhere else, please. But I understand. I get it. And, and so, we didn't tell them, so why would there be a thirty inch, then?
That was their method. They, they, they drive the pilot hole, then the thirty inch, and then the, the fifty-one inch bore goes around that thirty inch casing, and that's what makes the fifty-one inch hole.
So, now, how are they gonna get a seventy around it if they don't get the thirty through?
They're gonna pull everything out, use a different machine, and get the, it's an eighty-seven, isn't it, Dean? Get the eighty-seven through.
Before they put, tried the fifty-four.
Can you, um, bear with me for a minute, Mayor, 'cause, oh, shoot.
It doesn't matter. I think there's three votes, so... Well, I might-
No, I-
They, no, they haven't incurred that one point seven-
That's what they're claiming.
In expenses yet, have they?
Well, between what they've incurred, my understanding is, from the information Dean gave me, is they had incurred about seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand is total incurred cost. Then there's a cost-
More?
Yeah, but that didn't include the cost for the casing pipe, which has already been purchased, the cost for, um, something to do with, uh-
So, there, there's additional work beyond just getting it through and the trenchless part. There are some trenched pieces that then have the, the, the thirty-six inch sanitary line that connect to storm sewer, or manholes, I should say, on both sides. There's two on each side. So, not only if, when the discussion, I think we're talking about, is if we were to get out of it and, and not do any more work. So, that, that amount is also included, which is not included in the seven hundred thousand that was originally just for getting the trench, the trenchless piece across.
Who's the contractor?
Doing the trenchless work is Iowa Trenchless.
You know, they should be here today.
Why, why would they need to be here?
Well, because we're, we're not real happy with them, Bob.
Dean, I appreciate that you're gonna pull those numbers together for us. Question I, I would, oh, you don't have a map handy, do you? I, just overall, I wanna know exactly what- I, just overall, I wanna know exactly what, what area it's affecting from one end to the other.
Right there by the bridge.
You had a map up earlier when you were talking about the trail that actually shows the area.
Yeah, it's, it's right there. They're boring it right in the corner of the parking lot at the, at the...
At the 232?
What's it serving?
What, oh, yeah.
What?
What's it serving?
Mark, well, it's a 30, is it sanitary?
Sewer line.
It's a 36-inch, it's going to that big lift station at Floyd, right?
Mark, you can...
Yes.
...help on that?
Isn't it?
I just want an overall picture of, of what it's serving and, and how, how this came up, and what would happen if we didn't do anything? If we did cancel the contract. I wanna know what that impact is. I'm trying to make an informed decision today based on little information, so...
Yeah, it carries a lot of sewage.
Okay, but...
We'd have to find a, a different route for that sewage.
But from where to, where? I mean, I'm just trying to get...
I, I believe it goes, uh, from the, uh, where the Riverside Lift Station is, clear out to the west.
Okay.
Carries that flow all the way down to about the Hamilton area, goes down to the Perry Creek Lift Station.
So, we've gotta, I mean...
Does it go to the Perry Creek? Is that where they're born to, is the Perry Creek Lift Station? And...
If Dave can get GIS up, if that's what you're looking for.
I'm trying to figure out why you have to... So, we have to do something with what we have then, cause we're not changing anything. Why do we even have to do this, sort of, put it in casing?
We're gonna be paying $2,000 a day until we...
Well, I don't wanna pay 2.4 million like that.
No. That's, that's what I guess I don't understand. How, typically, when you run into this type of encounter, don't you request a change order and come forward with that? But it sounds like everything's been ordered, and you've been moving forward, and all of a sudden, we're just finding out about the dollar amounts, and we're, we're questioning what this all means and how it got to this point?
No, what's been ordered was the stuff that was for the original contract. For the original contract that they had bid, all that material's been ordered and it's specialty ordered.
You got a 36-inch that goes onto there now to that sewer lift station.
There's a, yeah.
Is an unencased pipe that's sitting right on the Perry Creek conduit footing.
What was that again? I'm sorry.
The existing, the existing sanitary sewer is, is a 36-inch pipe sitting right on the footing of the Perry Creek conduit, and it's not encased underneath the...
Hey, so Dave, you can't, it's gotta go down.
You're right there. You're right there.
Yeah, it's, maybe Dean, you...
I gotta see where you...
You're right, you're right here. They're boring right there.
Yep. Yep, they're going right through here.
Well, I thought they said earlier they were on the east side.
Over here?
Thought they were between Perry Creek and the bridge.
He's got it, he's got it on, Dave, they're on the east side there.
Right there?
Well, just go back, Dave, towards the parking lot. They're set up right on the corner of the parking lot.
This side.
And they're going across.
No, no, it's on the, it's on the west side of Perry Creek.
Yeah, it's on the west side, cause there's a pump station right there, it comes in...
Okay, well, it looks, it's right there then.
Slow down and go again.
Cause there's all kinds of 36-inch pipe laying right on the...
Right.
Right on the roadway of Triview.
Okay.
That's where it's going.
So, where else could we go?
You can't. You can't go anywhere else.
Without taking so much time to do the bores and...
Yeah, you don't, you may end up in the same situation. Yeah, no guarantee you move somewhere. That, that's the one thing we thought about, is what if we moved it over or moved it diagonal? And, and there's no guarantee we wouldn't hit the same trash.
There's a lift station there.
Right here.
Right there at the bottom.
Yeah, that's the lift station.
Right there.
There.
That's the lift station.
And then it pumps down to the...
Over to the...
Any guarantees this will fit, uh, that solve the problem, the 87-inch?
The contractor gives it a 99% chance. He says he doesn't ever, he doesn't ever guarantee, but he says 99% chance this is, this will be successful.
Is that the old Miller? Is that Miller, the driller? Is that what they call, that's not them, same people?
No, I don't...
No, it's a different company.
They're on a, not Pella, Anora.
That's your understanding?
Yes.
That's your understanding too?
Yes.
What, what is the distance on that, roughly?
The, the initial bore is supposed to be 525 feet.
525 feet? And this, and the garb, so the garbage is all, the 100, the 525 feet total garbage?
They started with the pilot hole, and they got to about here, right?
Correct.
The bore pit was supposed to be on the other side of Triview. They got short of Triview. They pulled the pilot back, they ran the pilot hole again, hit the same spot, dug a new bore pit there, which there's a cost they incurred that's on a unit cost basis, so they dug another pilot hole there. Started with the 30-inch and started going through, and they got to about here. And then that's when, I mean, they, they, they made it through one day, what'd they make, 80-some feet or 100 feet the first day?
120 feet.
120 feet the first day, and then after that, it just came to a grinding halt. They've gotten 20 feet over...
Couple weeks.
So, there's no garbage in the 120 feet?
Mm-hmm.
Is that what you're saying? There's no...
It's just they're gonna punch a 70 to make sure they charge you for it.
They got 120 feet into it, so that left about 300, 80?
Right now, we're a total of 160 after everything, so...
But that's just with the 30-inch. They haven't come back through with the 51-inch. Which is what the plan was, is to run the 30 and then come behind it with the 51.
I like that pipe we got on the ground right now. I bet that clay will outlast everybody in this room and then some.
Existing pipe?
Mm-hmm.
I think so. I think if it fills line, it would be fine, but that's not what FHWA let us do. It has to be cased, we're stuck.
Did you, did you two understand it this way too? This is what we're, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I mean...
Yes, we, we talked about it in the Public Works meeting.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Yeah, it stayed.
It's laying on the floor of the Perry Creek? No.
Outside footing.
Yeah. Did Lazard put that in when he did that deal?
I couldn't tell you. I would assume, I'm assuming it went in when the channel went in.
Lazard must have done that when he did it. That's not even that old. Why in the world didn't the Corps tell us, or the DOT tell us to encase it when we did it originally? We went under all your stuff.
FHWA.
What's that?
The Federal Highway Administration is the one that requires it to be encased.
But we would've had to have a permit for them when we did the channel at the Perry Creek. We went right under there. I remember, we were driving cement trucks up that road.
Predates me, Bob, I'm sorry.
No, it doesn't. You've been around about that long.
Do you think you'll have those numbers put together when you come back with the change order? Is that what I'm hearing too?
Yes.
By the time we get a change order before us, and that would, you would anticipate that to be when? Just roughly, I mean, in two weeks?
Probably three, cause we won't have a meeting in two weeks.
We're running them $2,000 a day while we negotiate a change order too?
What's that?
So, the 23rd.
Love beats.
They're gonna start, they're gonna start moving forward with stuff, yeah.
There's nothing else that any of you can think of that might, that we're not thinking about that we can do?
Abandon.
Well, can we even do that? What, what happens to the sewer?
Well, that's what I'm asking. I...
It's gotta go somewhere.
Run the sewer overhead.
You're not serious about that, are you?
Uh, I guess I...
Yeah, I'm very serious about that. That pipe is hardly 20 years old.
Yeah, but you can't. And what do you, where do you go then?
It's, that pipe is already there. It's 20 years old. Lazard, I'm positive, must have done it when he expanded the Perry Creek. Do you know the age on it, Mark?
I don't. We can look.
But, and it was under there, and the DOT, and the federal DOT accepted it? Now, all of a sudden, they don't accept it.
Uh, that, that's been a bulk of our projects that have gone through here, have been replacing underage pipes that, just cause they had to be in the casing, or we had to move them outside of their right-of-way to run parallel.
So, that shuts the project down if we don't do this? The interstate?
I don't think it's gonna shut down the project, but I think you guys need that flow from everything they, uh...
Yeah.
When we worked with the staff, they looked at every option to do it.
Of course they did. They like those projects, but I don't. Not on, I mean, clay, clay's not gonna wear out in 20 years, guys.
No, I, I, I agree with you. I don't, I think the pipe's underage. It doesn't, it hasn't had it, it hasn't used that, lived out its lifespan yet.
And I gotta make sure we're perfectly clear on this, are you? So, you're saying that we cannot use the pipe, right?
Correct, cause it's not encased.
Cause it's not encased.
Well, isn't that amazing? Cause 20 years ago, when they did the Perry Creek...
Previously.
Yes. Cause you had, you couldn't have gone under that interstate with the Perry Creek project without DOT and federal approval. You couldn't have built it.
And so, why you put that through and then have them go back and do it, redo the interstate and say, no, now it has to be encased?
Right, am I right? We would've had to have your approval. We couldn't have done that Perry Creek project without your approval. It's underneath your road.
I wasn't here, but I would say, I would, thought you would've been required to place this.
I'm sure we had to. I'm positive we had.
And it wouldn't have been getting an exception or something, like, it just would've been at acceptable terms. It didn't have to be encased then. Now, anything that goes through it has to be encased.
Can we find that out? Can you, Mr. Padmore, you can find that information out for us?
Maybe Lazard's listening and sent me a text. I bet he did it with that project, I almost guarantee it.
Um, does that seem odd if that, if that's the case, just generally speaking?
Dan, that was all of our pipes that were under the interstate were this. That's, that's the whole thing, is all these pipes now have to be encased.
And this is the only one that's coming to us because we're hitting garbage. But that's probably why there's been such an increase in cost.
I mean, they, we, we had pipes that ran parallel under the interstate, and they made us, now we have to move those outside because they don't know, they no longer allow those. They were all permitted.
Well, they don't want them under their roadbed. I get that part.
But they were permitted all at one time, and now they've changed their permitting.
But they weren't under their roadbed. I get that part. You don't wanna be out there fixing a sewer line and closing down a lane.
But even our ones that were outside the roadbed that were just in their right-of-way all had to get moved.
I don't know about that.
They didn't want anything in their right-of-way unless it's...
And I'm guessing that a reconstruction project triggers that requirement, but that's something that we will find out.
But we didn't have the choice for the reconstruction project, the way it's out.
Mm-mm.
We what?
Didn't have the choice for the reconstruction project, right?
All right, well, let's do something here so we can get out of here tonight. Your motion, thank you.
I don't know. I don't even know what action to take.
I'll move it.
There a second?
Do we have another option?
No. Well, I don't know of any. I'll second it, uh, so we can get a vote.
We've prayed.
And I, I don't know what other options we have.
Yeah, we've prayed.
It's our intent to move forward.
I'd love to drive my heels and say that we have to do what's right, but I don't know.
The only other procedural option would be to request the change order documentation prior to taking any action by the council.
But then that's pushing it longer and costing more.
Well, the only thing we're saying right now is, is that, that...
No. They're going to work tomorrow when you vote.
Well, this says announcing the intent to move forward upon receipt of final costs and proper documentation.
He just said that.
Why would we move forward if we don't have that information?
But that's, the, the whole point is for us to let them start moving forward with preparing to do this stuff, even though we don't have the cost, and then approving the final cost in a couple of weeks.
Well, am I reading it wrong?
My understanding is that it was requested before they move forward with preparing the change order document now.
It's not like they're gonna start tomorrow.
But it says upon receipt of.
Yeah.
Correct.
We don't have any of that.
Correct.
But they won't be able to start because they have to order all their stuff and all that kinda...
But they're still gonna charge you $2,000 a day even though you're prepared to give them a change order. That's ridiculous. That's baloney. Longer they take the stall, the longer they get the 2,000 a day. That's just wrong. Just absolutely wrong.
I agree.
That's kinda stealing.
But I know what it is. If they're shut down and they're gonna charge you for it. That's the way it works on a DOT project. Because they're changing, we're changing the scope.
If there's an ability for the contractor to move forward while that is being prepared, then what they will be doing is they've got work to do to prepare for the next phase, like was, like was discussed, getting the materials ordered, so they'd have to have the 87 and a half inch casing prepared. They have to remove the work that they've already been doing, and there's things that's gonna take them some time, so then they're not, they're no longer sitting there idle and having a downtime charge. It's a charge that is included in the costs that, that are being discussed.
Well, why didn't that come here three weeks ago?
Before we incurred the 2,000 a day? Probably because I thought they could bore through it.
We, we were exploring, we're exploring all the options as soon as we learned about it.
Get another 10 feet and open it up.
The kind of vote that you have before you, that you wanna vote no, you know, because of the... Yeah, because of the situation, because of the high cost to taxpayers. I mean, another 1.7 million? You wanna vote no, but then if a majority vote no, then, then where are we? I mean, it's just...
But please also keep in mind that what they're representing is that the contractor could proceed forward with purchasing materials that you have not seen or approved under the change order. I just would caution the council of that.
That's... How long before you can get the change order?
I, I, I feel... I think we'd get it in a couple of weeks. I'd say a couple of weeks.
We, we might have to have a special meeting, Mayor, cause we don't, we don't meet on the 16th, and... So, you won't have it next week. A week from today's the 9th. You wouldn't have it a week from today. Two weeks from today's the 16th, we don't...
Gonna order that pipe, and you are gonna, you just, if you're voting today, you need to know that you're voting for this change order.
Yes.
So, you know it.
I was gonna say, cause if you get the number back...
Cause if you, you're buying that pipe, you're gonna be up to two and a half million bucks here if we're not careful for doing nothing. So, you're buying the pipe today. You need to understand that when you vote yes.
And the normal course would be to prove a change order. Under this contract, you would have that information in the form of a change order before being asked to make that determination.
Exactly.
Mayor, here's what I'm struggling with though. So, where do you draw the line? I mean, you're at 700,000, now you're at 2.4. If we go to 3.6 or 4.5, when do we say enough is enough and we're...
I don't know. You're relying on a contractor that tells you 99%. He, he guarantees it 99%. What that means is he guarantees nothing, cause he's gonna say it would just, gosh, you guys lucked out, and you're the one of the 1 percenters. I don't even wanna be 1 percenters in life, you know, like...
Is that like...
When it comes to income like you, Dan, but I can't...
Is that like getting third place in a, in your professional judgment? What, what would you do if you were me? I, I won't say the council, if you were me, what would you do in this situation?
On it? I initially wanted them to keep going through. We had contract bid items, but they explained to me it's physically impossible for them to get through. They cranked their machine way up, way above manufacturer's recommendations to try and get through there, and they couldn't. So, I think if you want that pipe through there, we've got to put the 87-inch pipe.
Well, I'm just saying we don't want the pipe through there. We wanna stay with the pipe we have.
And there's...
I don't think the FHWA's gonna allow you to do it.
And their, and their safety's not being negotiated with what we're doing. The safety of the workers.
No, it's, it, it, it will be a lot safer doing it this way, right? They got big room to work in there. They can get more equipment in there to remove the garbage.
You agree with that?
Yes.
Dean? Dave?
Unfortunately, I mean, I, I agree with Bob that I, I wish we could use the, the pipe that's in there, cause I think it's got a lot of life left in it, but...
Ridiculous, if they're even new. I mean, you're abandoning pipe that's, work will be here for... But let's vote.
Donna?
We got a, we got a motion, right?
Mayor, I just wanna ask Donna, is there anything that I might be missing as far as what the CIP item and, and funding this?
We, we will just have to talk to our finance authority to amend our loan to increase it for the additional amount. And then we'll have to do a projection on rates, because this is significant enough money that it could affect rates.
Those are the rates that I wanna raise, right?
Yeah. Right now, we weren't projecting a rate increase, but we'll have to look at next year now.
You know, here's the deal. It's, we don't wanna spend the 2-point-some million. Do we have a choice? This has to get done. So, we're, it, it's either...
Well, I don't know. I'm kinda with the mayor. It may not necessarily have to get done. Well, I don't know. I'm kinda with the mayor. It may not necessarily have to get done.
You don't think so?
Well.
What, what would happen if we capped the line? I mean, what happens to the, what's going through the line now?
It's gonna shut a lot of people off.
You wanna talk about some not happy taxpayers? There you go.
It's not an option.
Yep. No, that is, that is not an option.
Well, you can't cap the line. You gotta leave it to one that's going, going, but it's relatively new.
But it can't be going too far if, if, if it's plugged. I mean.
Can't keep it going though.
Yes, it can. It's running every day today. It's running right now.
The only reason, the only reason we're not allowed to let it keep going is because of the FHWA.
There's no exceptions. You can't petition.
Well, try dealing with the federal government. See how far you get. That's the whole thing.
I mean, this is what, I think we've gone to DC for 10 years about asking is, is these were all regulations that were put down on us that we've incurred the cost and have gotten no assistance on.
Okay, well, you'll get the contracts to the city attorney.
I hate it. We gotta do it. Don't you think?
See what was done 20 years ago or whenever it was and.
I mean.
I don't hear any other options, but you hate to give them blanket approval to whatever their expenses may be without knowing what they are.
I know. I just feel like you're throwing a, a sign check.
Know enough about these driller guys. They're just laughing her up today. They're, they love these deals, but what are you gonna do? So.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Run for city council, they said. It'll be, it'll be fun, they said.
Costs you money, I know that. Their meetings are run longer than they should.
So Dave, your recommendation is move forward?
Fortunately, yeah, I think, being in compliance with, with the requirements, yeah.
Yep. Yeah, and there's, I agree with Rhonda, there's.
Bad bores, that's how it happens.
I don't know how you fight federal government.
Bad information is exactly what happened.
Had to be done.
So either way. Everybody knew it was a landfill.
But the bore didn't, didn't appear to.
Detect that, yeah.
Didn't detect.
How deep did they go for that?
They would've gone to the bottom of the deal.
How deep did the borings go?
200 feet or so.
Well, they would've gone to the bottom where the bore is supposed to be. They would've had to.
They were way beyond.
Yeah, they'd have had to.
Deeper than the pipe.
Yeah.
Deeper than the depth of the pipe.
Well, sure, they had to.
Yeah.
What are you waiting for? Oh, you want me to vote?
Yeah.
You're thinking?
So do I, so I can get out of here.
Oh, okay.
Wait, I'm just waiting. I got, not making any money sitting here now. Passes forward in one, I vote no. I need to go so you guys can do your council concerns, that's, or citizen concerns. I'll wait to see if we have any citizens.
Bob, are you gonna have anything?
Seeing none, you're in charge.
All right. Council concerns, Mr. Gretkin?
Uh, two quick things. Um, I wanted to thank Melissa Campbell. Last week I spoke to her before the council meeting about a litter complaint off of Christie Road, and she, she jumped right on it and, and they got, uh, the overlook project did clean up a lot. But I will tell you this, just a unsolicited editorial comment, uh, litter in the community is just unreal. And, and the overlook project, I, I will tell Dan Heiser to his face all around that mall, it's just unbelievable. And so I guess maybe I would, I would just like to point it out and I would like to plead for everybody's help in, in picking up where they can litter, preventing the litter from being, uh, thrown out of the cars or, or however it's getting there, but it, litter is really bad and it really, uh, not only environmentally, but it just makes the entire community look awful.
Mr. Gretkin, could I interrupt you there?
Yes.
Litter Dash is, say, April 20th.
Litter Dash is April 20th, and anybody can volunteer.
They, they can. Sign up ended this, uh, last Saturday. I think there's 20 or 21 teams at this point.
But if they wanna join a team or if they wanna help out or something, I'm sure they could put a.
Sure. Yeah.
Well, I, I would encourage those who may be listening or, uh, anybody who would care to share the information to try to, uh, get as many people involved as possible, because I think that litter, uh, issue was a serious one. And then, uh, and I, and again, thank Melissa Campbell for her work, and I sent her an email, but, but she did get his attention and hopefully that'll help. And then I just wanted to share that I went to a home dedication with, uh, Sooland Habitat for Humanity at noon today. Uh, it was very nice, 1620 West Fourth Street, the, the work that was done. I, I believe that house was due for demolition and it was moved to a vacant lot over there and in the, uh, Davila family, I believe that's the correct, uh, pronunciation. They, uh, they have a really, really nice home and, uh, I appreciate certainly all the work that Habitat does in our community and, and all the people that were involved in, in this. Uh, and I wanted to acknowledge Amy Kearns because, uh, the Neighborhood Services Project Coordinator, Amy is. And, and they were acknowledged by, um, uh, Katie Roberts, who is the executive director, about all the work that they, uh, participated in helping, helping to make this project go. So, again, it was a really nice, uh, event and I know the family is thrilled. I think they had 350 hours of, uh, sweat equity into it. So they, they worked really hard too in, in getting, uh, this new home for them and, and I think it will help the neighborhood tremendously too. So I'm done.
Thank you for attending that today.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thanks.
I pass.
All right, let's see. I wanted to, actually, and I don't know if Mark's gonna call us or not. Uh, how did the event go? Does anyone know?
If you were able to attend the joint meeting tomorrow with council and EAB at noon, you'll get a full update on that. Went very well.
I'd like to commend staff. I think it's a, it's an event worth having and I appreciate that.
Can I bring stuff tomorrow?
On the side of the, or on the side of the street. I appreciate that. I would echo, um, my counsel, my Gretkin's concern. I, I've had complaints. I've had most people talk to me about litter. I understand the Litter Dash and its intent, and hopefully it addresses some of those things. I just don't know where to start with that. And I, everyone that talks to me about it, my response is, well, have you joined a team or have you signed up to be a part of a team for the Litter Dash? Like, we're all gonna have to come together as a community and I don't know whether it's, um, you know, like Volunteer Sooland or Leadership Sooland or all these different organizations that you can say, look, we all need to come together and really have a team to do that. And then, then is it sustainable? Then you have people that, you know, are you really buying into the piece that we need to keep Sioux City clean and, or are we just having a, one day a, a year where people band together and clean up other people's messes? And then they just make it messy, you know?
You know, they're, start with the colleges and start with the high school kids and then the junior high kids.
I don't know. That's what I always think too, is it's like, you can't tell me you can't get a high school class
Yeah.
to figure out how they can all go around and do some, I don't know. I, there's gotta be.
People have to be out there to be, have to incentivize them.
That, that reminds me, maybe about a month ago, I, I brought up an issue with the Boys and Girls Club where I was contacted by Tom Vets, and, uh, I know the mayor mentioned he thought he knew some, uh, corporate people who might wanna participate, but what the Boys and Girls Club is looking to do, uh, it's a 10-year annual membership. Uh, but they want the, uh, uh, boys and girls going to the club, uh, to have a vested interest in earning and to participate in it. So they were looking for some, uh, a donation to, um, help Boys and Girls Club, but the, one of the things that, that he mentioned to me is, is that they would like to have the kids, uh, from the Boys and Girls Club hit the trails from here along Hamilton Boulevard and to help clean and pick up and, and hopefully that, uh, develops a sense of responsibility and, and some dedication to helping keep, you know, the community cleaner. So, uh, I'm not sure where that ended. I'm not sure that we even have the ability to, to participate, but, but maybe I can check with Tom and find out where they're at and, but I do know that the Boys, the, uh, and Girls Club will probably be willing to jump out on the trails.
But if we can just look at these organizations and think outside of the box, I mean, I would even be, I would even be willing to look into, are there inmate programs? I mean, if we utilize inmates and have them doing work programs in the spring where they go out.
I'll sure mention to Melissa, she's got her plate pretty full, but, uh, she does, uh, talk to a lot of volunteer organizations about.
And that's where I always have to band together, because for me too, it's a parks and rec. It's not just under Melissa. It'd be under Matt too. That, it's like, look, Matt isn't just gonna do all the fun stuff with Riverfront. Let's, let's make sure he's doing a little other work, but. I, I think if there are other programs or groups that we can reach out to and contract with. Now, I don't think, that's not getting to the systemic nature of people need to be more clean and not throwing trash out. I mean, I, I don't think you're reaching that. But if there is something we can do to band together, I don't know, maybe they just start changing their mentality. I don't know. That's all I'll say about that, is if we can just try to.
We'll, we'll have some internal discussions, sure. Okay.
Thank you for that. Um, so yeah, thank you for the re-event and that tangent that we walked down. I apologize. Um, then, the only other thing that I really probably wanna bring up, um, make sure this Sunday you participate in the multicultural fair. Uh, Faces of Sooland is what it's called. It's gonna be held at the Sioux City Convention Center from noon to 4:00 PM. I've went every year for probably five years. It's, or however, maybe four or something, but it's a, it's a great event. You get to eat a lot of great food, um, from different cultures here represented in, in Sooland, and I think it's a great chance to see their native dance or different groups put on things and, and it's something that, it's something to showcase and I think is what makes our community great, so. Uh, make sure, I hope to see you all there. I'll be there as part of Sioux City Growth Organization. Passing out information on them as well, so. Hope to see you all there. That's all I got, boss.
Thank you. Nicole, the boys, do you have anything?
I do not.
Mr. Padmore? I'll move that we adjourn.
Second.
Caprin?
Yep.
Gretkin?
Hi.
Hi.